Regular meeting of the Scarborough Planning Board for Tuesday, October 12th is now in session. We will stand please for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance of the United States of America. Okay, I, I, I'm sure we'll get better as the night goes on. Can we have the roll, roll call, Doreen, please?
Rachel Hendrickson?
Here.
Roger Beely?
Yeah.
Jennifer Ladd?
Here.
Rick Minkin?
Here.
We have a quorum. The next item is the approval of minutes. We do not have those minutes. So we'll move on to a consent item. Number five, Real Estate Development Investment Company, Redeco, requests a site plan review for Lot 34 within the Town Center Residential Subdivision assesses map R 52, Lot 34.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an item that's been before the board. This is now its fourth appearance. There's a sketch plan and then two subsequent formal site plan reviews. Your last meeting in September, the board felt generally comfortable with the direction that the project was headed, but there were still a few outstanding questions. So the board at that time moved the item to consent, waiting to see final responses. I'll just as a reminder, this is, project is proposing a 1,500 square, I'm sorry, 150,000 square foot plus or minus building in Scarborough Downs for a residential and long-term care facility. And it's within, as I said, the Scarborough Downs and the Town Center North subdivision. As I mentioned, it was before you in September. The applicant has provided revised materials. Staff has had an opportunity to review those and had very few remaining questions, which we've embedded as conditions of approval should the board be satisfied with the direction of responses as well. Do I turn it back?
Thank you, Jay. I will allow the developer representative to have a last couple of words, and I emphasize couple. You've had a chance, I believe, to see the draft motion. Do you have any concerns or questions?
Looking for approval, and we're happy to clean up these last couple items here as conditions of approval. So, thank you.
Thank you. This is an item for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience or online that would like to make a comment? Angela? Nobody? Nobody in the audience? All right, let me ask the board if the members have any particular questions. Rick?
Yes, just the first question. On the care report, it looks like if I was at least provided information that was based on proposed kind of mean development. It doesn't fit that too. As part of what Jay you sent out in for a packet, now this was wondering if, if Woodern had any additional comments they need to make.
You're referring to Woodern current comments on the item?
Yeah. He mentioned, he mentioned, had some more place.
I, based on the comments I have before me dated October 7th regarding American House Site Plan, the only comment they had left was that we need the final ability to serve letters. That was all I had.
Okay, well, it was just that the site plan application for the proposed condominium development.
Oh, okay. Yep, and so I think they just misstated the proposed use. I would put that more on Woodern, yep, and administrative error on their end in that regard.
Okay. I have, I have a question about item 2A that says the applicant shall pay traffic impact fees or in lieu of traffic impact fees may have an agreement in place with the Town Council or Planning Board related to traffic improvements and impact, traffic impact fees. That intended to refer to sort of the larger traffic, you know, plan that's, that's coming and, and if, if so, not sure. So I understand that I make that connection, but I'm not sure that one might get that from what's written here unless it's not important or if that link is being made somewhere else.
Yeah, it is intended to mean that, and essentially the, we're, we're in a small gap here of a couple of weeks where we're gonna have a couple of projects approved prior to the applicant either, one, they have a, I think council has a pending resolution or they might have even approved it. I can't quite recall exactly where it sits. There's also an application coming before this board ostensibly as the workshop we had back in August or September to talk about the traffic movement permit that's going to permit upwards of 3,000 trips. And so really, in lieu of the town, it's very likely that this project isn't going to get started until we sort of have those decisions made. So rather than the town sort of collecting money just to hand that money back and it's, you know, at some point, you know, we, this, it's, it may not be crafted as articulately maybe as, as it could be, but it's really intended to relieve that administrative burden should the planning board and/or council make a decision that makes that unnecessary, and we believe that's forthcoming.
Okay, that's what I assumed.
Yep.
All right, I, let me just ask Drew, is that your understanding?
Yeah, so there's, it's, it's essentially the TNP was approved and it's going through the town process like Jay mentioned of a, essentially a impact fee schedule that again, so there, there's off-site mitigation that's going to be proposed as part of this and it, and rather than, as Jay said, pay the town to have it put right back into it, there may just be means to work around it and alleviate administrative portion of it. So I understand it the same way Jay does.
All right, thank you. In that case, if there are no more questions, I have a motion. I move to approve the project titled "American House Senior Living Development," proposed by Redeco as depicted on the plan set prepared by Goral Palmer dated 9/27/21 with the following findings, waivers, and conditions. Findings: The proposed site plan application includes the construction of a plus or minus 155,000 square foot two and three-story residential and long-term care facilities for the ill-aged or disabled facility. The proposal also includes off-street parking, garden, patio areas, and landscaping and is located on Lot 34 within the Town Center Residential Subdivision at the Downs. The project is located within the Crossroads Plan Development CPD zoning district. Waivers: Number one, permit the proposed 24-foot parking aisle widths as proposed. Two, permit the proposed driveway separation along Scarborough Downs Road as proposed. Conditions: One, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide the following. A, an operation and maintenance plan for the site, including gravel wetland number five under separate cover. B, a fully executed recorded stormwater maintenance agreement as required under Chapter 419 of the ordinance. C, update plans to reflect any necessary modifications to the turning radius onto the fire lane off of front runway to satisfy the fire department comments and concerns. D, provide design plans, easements, and associated details for the required sanitary sewer pump station, including design approval documentation from the Scarborough Sanitary District. E, provide approval from the Portland Water District. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall, A, pay the traffic impact fees. In lieu of traffic impact fee payments, the developer may have an agreement in place with the Town Council or Planning Board related to traffic improvements or traffic impact fees. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. Three, prior to the issuance of a sign permit, the applicant shall provide a final signage plan. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. Four, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall coordinate a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the Planning Department. All planned modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roger Beely, seconds. Additional discussion from the board? Hearing done. Doreen, you please call the roll.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Item six. Moco Tech LLC requests a final subdivision review for 124 Sawyer Road assesses map R 54, Lot 4. Jay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you just mentioned, this is a request for final subdivision for, for a property along Sawyer Road that the applicant is actually looking to create two new house lots. There's an existing house on, on one lot. They're looking to further divide that property. As mentioned, this is final review, therefore that means this has received preliminary approval by the planning board, but there are some additional materials that needed to be done prior to final, and staff has reviewed those materials and provided comments for the board at this time. One of the changes that planning board will note is the applicants really worked on for the Village Green area, which you know, the, the configuration of this lot was a little tricky to fit in some of the particular standards of the VR4, which contemplated, really didn't contemplate a development this small very well. But the applicants worked on that and has identified some back area along lots one and two that will be held in common. And I, I think at the last discussion, there were some, some deliberation around how do you sort of maintain that as public and so we'll, we'll or comment, I should say, so we'll have some further discussion there. As noted, staff did provide some comments. They're largely detailed in nature regarding to the culvert along the street as well as maintenance and operations manuals. I think with that, I'll turn it back to, to the board and staff will answer questions as we go.
Thank you. And for the developer.
Yes, good evening. My name is Paul Gabois. I'm doing the engineering work for Cheryl Morgan on this property and I'll be glad to answer your questions or I can go over the comments that the planning board staff has raised. We have no problem with adding a new sheet called a subdivision plan, removing some of the unnecessary details needed for a subdivision, which is the underdrain and the service to the project. And of course, the billing envelope is kind of vague because we don't know exactly what we're building. So we have no problem with creating a new sheet calling it subdivision plan, putting an index on that sheet and refer to the site plan, the erosion control plan, so we can tie it all together. So we have no issues with that. I haven't received the notes for the town standard notes. Certainly, I'd be glad to add that to the subdivision plan once I receive those notes. As far as the responsibility for the lot owners, and I did add the erosion control plan, which outlines the housekeeping for DEP for the projects and the stormwater basins. And hopefully we can just refer to the subdivision plans, basically the erosion control plan, which outlines all responsibilities for maintenance and of the ponds. We are in agreement to upgrade the existing 12-inch culvert to a 15-inch culvert because the 15-inch culvert is our minimum culvert required in the town of Scarborough. So it is a brand-new 12-inch culvert, but we have no problems upgrading that to a 15-inch culvert as suggested by Angela. I do have, I have 16 inches of cover over the culvert. I said 18, I have 16. Is that a real heartache? To the planning staff.
That's an interesting way to so let me ask Angela for hotter.
No, I think it was just unclear. There's, there's multiple places that there are different information. So I guess it's just making sure, and I think you clearly put in the detail like what you want to recover.
Yep.
In actuality, when you show the spot grades and the actual existing grades in the ditch and making sure that that's actually achievable. I guess that's, that's my, my goal.
I got.
What that profile of that dish.
I have a 16-inch cover over the 15-inch culvert. I certainly can raise the driveway grade from 2% to 4%, which will give me the 18 inches, but I'm just wondering if 16 inches is adequate. I believe it is for driveway.
Yeah, I guess I'd have to look at the other details though, if you know what I mean.
I think it's.
Really looking at what, where your inverts are and stuff like that. So I don't know if I want to say, I guess, on the spot here without looking at the whole design.
On the detail sheet, I do have a driveway entrance detail showing spot grades. So.
Well, have you had a chance to look at the draft motion?
No, I have not. Haven't seen it.
There is a section on the draft motion that says the driveway culvert details shall be provided as part of the building permit application. The detail will require sign-off by the town engineer prior to issuance of the permit. In other words, that, that means that you and Angela work together to come up to an.
I'm okay with that.
Very good. Thank you.
The only clarification I would have is that it also has to address staff comments. So I think we were hoping to get really what that ditch line looks like and so that then when the building permit comes in, we just verify that it's because I usually at that point it's a different contractor that's not always in tune with what's happening. And so then I can verify that they have the correct plan and correct inverts and elevation and things like that.
I'm pretty sure they're pretty clearly shown at driveway entrance detail, but, but we can work on that. Not a problem.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
And I have no other comments unless the planning board has some questions.
All right, first we go to, this is a public hearing. Do we have anybody in the audience or online that would like to comment on this? All right, we have, we have nobody who wishes to speak to this, so I'll ask the board members. Roger? All right, Jen? Appears that you lucked out. You don't have questions. I do have a draft motion. I move to approve the project titled "124 Sawyer Road Subdivision," proposed by Moco Tech LLC as depicted on the plan set prepared by Paul Gabois dated 9/27/21 with the following findings and conditions. The proposed subdivision plan includes the creation of two new residential lots along an existing public right-of-way, Sawyer Road. The subdivision is located within the Village Residential 4 zoning district and is further identified on the Town of Scarborough tax maps as our map R 54, Lot 4. Conditions: Number one, prior to the signing and release of the final subdivision plan, the applicant shall update the plan set to address items 1, 2, 3, 4, 6, and 7 in the staff review memo. And A, include a detail for hardscape feature to delineate the edge of the village green space on the rear of lots one and two. B, update plan to provide grading, including both the ditch and the driveway pavement elevation to show how the culvert can be installed with adequate cover. In addition, elevation shall be provided for the four-inch underdrain pipes outletting from the proposed stone drip edges. C, provide inverts of the culvert under the driveway as the plan shows flow both entering and exiting at 52. This shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department. Two, the driveway culvert detail shall be provided as part of the building permit application. The detail will require sign-off by the town engineer prior to issuance of the permit. Three, prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy on Lot 2, the proposed wood rail fence, village green space, hardscape feature referenced in condition 1A and the detention ponds on Lot 1 and 2 shall be completed prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy on Lot 2. Four, provide to the release of the, prior, excuse me, prior to the release of the plan for recording, the applicant shall pay the traffic impact fee and the recreation contribution fee. Five, prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy, a functional connection to the public sewer system will be required. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roger Beely has seconded. Does the board have any additional questions? All right, thank you. In that case, we will go for a vote. Doreen?
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
Rick Minkin?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item number seven. Chuck's Maine Lobster requests a site plan review for Lot 26 within the Innovation District subdivision at the Downs assesses map U 53, Lot 26. Jay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the last of our returning items, so everyone should get quite as excited as everything going so fast tonight, but I'm sure all the applications are good. Let's see. So Chuck's was before you at your last meeting. They are in with a roughly 13,000 square foot building that will consist of a food processing facility in the Innovation District of the Downs. The applicant has made a, a series of modifications to the plans based on the prior comments, and staff has just a few remaining comments related to reviewing potential for additional buffering, site access, lighting, and notably the Sanitary District did want to be sure that the applicant was aware that they are going to be looking for a, excuse me while I find it here. A, but, 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 yep, there it goes, a pretreatment and pump connection rather than a gravity line, just based on the use. With that, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you. And for the developer.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Doug Reynolds with Goral Palmer, here representing Chuck's Maine Lobster today. Again, we received the staff's comments last week. We've modified our plans to address all of them. We haven't gotten in touch with the sewer district, but we will. I can show you the changes that we made if, if, if that is the desire of the board, but if there's, I, I've not read any or seen any of the the draft what do you call it? Conditions and, 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 so again, if, if they're all addressed on there that we're gonna work with staff, then I don't need to talk anymore.
All right. This is subject to a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience or online who would like to comment? No one online? No one in the audience? We're going for a record? All right, thank you very much. I will turn this over to the board with questions. Roger, did you want to start?
Sure. So can I assume then on the staff comments pertaining to the sidewalks, you turn, that's all been taken care of?
Yep, we had, we had had a sidewalk further towards the back. We're just gonna move it up front, go across the front of the parking lot, push all the landscaping out so we maintain our landscaping buffer. We actually pushed the transformer back a little bit to make that work. And again, we, the, the issue was ADA accessibility and we, we made it long enough to be ADA. Be happy to get that revised plan to the staff. And the plantings on the, again, the right-hand side of the building, we added plantings along there as well.
Yeah, what are you gonna do? That's on the eastern side of the building?
Yeah, between, between Lot 25 and Lot 26. Again, it's, it's a really small space and they asked for something and I, and I think we added about eight junipers, you know?
Okay. I think I'm all set.
Jen?
No other questions, but thanks for providing the updated trip generation info based on your other facility. That's kind of different than anything that we otherwise see.
Yep.
Rick?
No, I just looked at the photo metric.
No, I just looked at the photo metrics, made sure that everything was a 3K light color. However, staff did mention that they don't have on file the intended fixture cut sheets.
It was actually, it was actually, it was actually in the original submission. Jay didn't find it.
Oh, okay. Then are you all set with that, Jay?
And they are 3,000 K.
Transition on that one?
Okay, that works for me. Okay, that's all I had, Madam Chair.
Sorry, Jay.
He threw you under the bus, you know?
All right, I, I have a couple of things left. I had noted the, the connection to the street of the, of the sidewalk. One of the things that I talked about at the last meeting was the need for someplace for staff perhaps to gather outside and sit. So my suggestion is that request is that you put some, a bench or a couple of benches in the, towards the rear. I believe there's a place.
Yeah, we talked about that and we, and we, we actually didn't add that. But there's a space back there behind the building that, again, that he probably have picnic tables out there for exactly that.
Very good. Thank you. And I think one other thing I had also asked for information on the basement at the lower level. That's in the, that is going to be in the draft motion. One of the reasons for that, even though it's not a full, a full floor, is if people can go down there and there's some sort of an accident, the EMTS, the, you need to know how to approach any area that's not immediately visible. So.
Again, we, we did show it on the plan, the revised plan. It's a, again, it's a really small area with an access step stair down to it. And it's, it's actually only, it's six feet below the finish, the finished floor. It's not even a full depth basement.
But as long as people can go down there, safety becomes an important issue. All right, that is all I have. We have a draft motion. I move to approve proposed site plan by Chuck's Maine Lobster as depicted on the plan set prepared by Goral Palmer dated 9/27/21 with the following findings and conditions. Findings, the proposed site plan includes the development of a 13,000 square foot food processing facility with the Innovation District at Scarborough Downs. The proposal also includes off-street parking, loading area, landscaping, and other site elements consistent with the plan site, site plan review standards. The project is located on lot 26 within the Innovation District subdivision at the Downs. The project is located within the Crossroads Plan Development CPD zoning district. Waivers based on the nature of the site use and limited access along the private drive, the board waives the limitation on number of curb cuts, separation requirements, and parking field dimensions. Conditions, one, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall A revise the plan set to address the remaining staff review comments in the memo dated 9/20/21 as directed by the planning board per their discussion. This shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. B revise the plan set to add employee seating area in the landscape area at the rear of the building. C receive final approval and permitting from the Scarborough Sanitary District. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall A provide details of the basement area as part of the building permit application. B pay the traffic impact fees. In lieu of traffic impact fee payments, the Downs developer may have an agreement in place with the town council or the planning board related to traffic improvements, traffic impact fees. These shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Three, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall coordinate a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. All planned modifications are to be completed prior to the scheduling of the pre-construction meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jen Ladd has seconded. The, does the planning board members, do they have any other additional questions? Hearing none?
Madam Chair, actually, just a friendly amendment, if I may. Under 1A, we have a date of the staff memo of 9/20/21. That should read 10/12/21, the memo for this tonight's meeting. Sorry about that.
We'll accept that as a friendly amendment and simply change that on the document. In that case, Doreen, call the role, please.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Ladd?
Yes.
Rick Mankey?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank you, folks. We look forward to having you in Scarborough.
Thank you.
The next item is JDR Trust requests a site plan amendment review for 225 US Route 1, assessors map U44 lot 2. Jen?
Sure, just as a quick update, the applicant is proposing to add a stairwell addition to the existing building at 225 US Route 1, former site of Arlberg, most to remember. The addition will enable the conversion of the site from a retail space to a commercial office space for, for multiple tenants. You have, staff has reviewed the, the proposal and we have some modest comments. We will note that within the application, there did appear to be some discrepancies in the project description. So we'll just look for that to be addressed. But from a, and I think from, from a site elements design perspective, sort of the biggest question staff had was, we noted that there was a single story addition to the building some four to six years ago. I don't remember the timeframe exactly, but that was identified to be storage space for the former retail user, you know, wetsuits, surfboards, what have you. It's unclear what the intent of that space is moving forward and depending on the answer may impact the staff comments. And then we just also noted that, you know, as typical with site plan amendments, an opportunity for the town to really take a look at lighting and try to become more compliant with the expectations for today's standards. I think with that, I'll turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. And for the developer.
Thank you. My name is Steve Berg. I'm the trustee for JDR Trust, the, the owner of the building. We're proposing, the ski shops moved out. They were selling, you know, sporting goods on two different floors. There's one center staircase in the building. It's a former school building. It was built, I believe, 1910, 1920 era. So it's fairly old compared to other stuff in town here. And it's just not really, as it sits right now, it's not really leasable in this current state. We've identified two tenants that have chosen to move there. Both office users, both existing tenants within Oak Hill Plaza. And to answer Jay's question, the, the tenant who's taking, who's planning on leasing the second floor, if it's approved, is also using that storage space for his personal, for his, you know, shop supplies and stuff. It's a heating contractor, so he has stuff that he'd be storing in there. So there'd be no outside storage of third parties or anything. It's just the two tenants in the building will be the only people using the whole building. What we're proposing is, and I don't know if you can bring up the elevation on the screen. But basically, we're not changing anything to the front of the building visible from route 1. All the improved, the improvement we're doing is a, is a 14 by 22 approximately stair tower on the back of the building facing the dry cleaners and the Oak Hill beverage, that side of the, the building. So it's, it's relatively, you know, not very visible from, from any of the, you know, outside streets. And it's really, literally is just a stair tower. And also, because the building doesn't have any accessibility, we're putting in a chair lift in there. I hate to say chair, a lift for wheelchairs so they can get up. Because the, the ground, the first floor level of the building is actually four feet above ground level. So the access is a problem in the building now. So that's what we're proposing to do is putting in code compliance steps to get to the second floor and also an accessible lift to get to the first floor. That's, so in that drawing there, if you look at the top of the drawing, that, that's where the stair tower is in the middle. Off to the right side, we see that L-shaped, that's the existing pet shop space in the building, in the adjacent building 27 Gorham Road, which also fronts on route 1. And then, do you have the cover page by any chance? Yeah, yeah, I guess that one doesn't have it. Yeah, there was, there you go, right there. So that's what the, I mean, the white is the existing building. The brown would be what they proposed addition. They'll use the same building materials as the existing building, same type of windows. So it'll blend in. It's got the similar roof lines front and back. So that's what we've proposed. Garan has drawn up for elevation. Were there any other specifics I can address, questions you might have?
I, I would suggest that you take a look at the staff comments and see if there's anything you haven't addressed that, where the staff has raised a question.
Sure. I believe I have Dan Danvers here from Sibego Tech along with Kylie Mason. They're the engineers on the project. I believe we'll respond to the questions, but I'll have Kylie address that.
Sure, thank you. My name's Kylie Mason from Sibego Technics. We did send a response to comments today. It's a little late for the meeting, I think. But I think that generally clears up everything on the comments. The one thing that Jay mentioned, there was some conflicting information in the application. It's, it was a simple error. A working document was printed. So both of the exhibit two project narratives are just erroneous working documents. But the new exhibit three narrative holds true. And a, an update of that was provided today with the new leasing area updated. So that should clarify the narrative and the conflicting information because essentially it was just a working copy that got printed into it. In terms of lighting, I think there was a comment, there is a pole that's not being relocated, but it's being removed. So we're not proposing to relocate or add additional fixtures. I think that's largely, there's a question of a drip edge. That's just replacing the existing drip edge that's already in place around the deck structure. It doesn't tie into anything. It just drains through to the foundation drain, which is the previously approved draining mechanism on the site. So when the building was previously approved, it had a drip edge that tied into the foundation drain.
All right, thank you. This also is subject to public comment. Do we have anybody in the room or online? No one online. All right, let's turn this over to the board. Questions, please?
Steve? Now, what are you going to do on, on the front of the building right now? That's where most, most of the parking is to use this, this particular facility. Is that correct?
No, there's actually the building service, there's a rear door as well. And that goes into a parking field behind there, that in front of the dry cleaners, the pet shop. So there's, there's parking between Walgreens and the building itself. Up to the top, I think.
So people, basically, if they park in the front of the building, they're going to have to walk around?
Well, the, the people who are renting the second floor space, which is strictly office space, no public, you know, traffic going there, they would be entering from this rear stair tower. And also, if someone was accessible, we'll have signage to direct them to the back because these, the people who are leasing the front first floor will be accessing it off the route 1 entrance, which is not ADA accessible. So they'll still, the people who, clients that are going to the first floor office will park on the route 1 side anticipated. And they could, or they could park out back and walk around. And the people who are leasing the second floor will use the parking field behind the building. So.
And, and on the storage, that one story, that's going to be shared by both?
It's not shared, no. It'll be strictly for the second floor tenant. He has private access to it. So it's, there's a rear door to it that he can access the space.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Jen?
It looks like you're, so you're eliminating, how many spaces? Three?
We're actually, we're eliminating one space.
One, okay. And then, I don't know, the rates offhand, but the storage, you're saying that, you know how big that storage area is?
Not off the top of my head.
It doesn't matter. I'm just curious if adding it to the second floor counts as their total, you know, area on which we base parking and trips?
It's my understanding it doesn't apply towards it for storage. But are we in agreement, Jay, or? Okay.
Jay and Angela are nodding their heads.
And I'll turn my mic down and say yes, I'm agreeing.
I think other than, you know, I do think putting signage in the front indicating, you know, if the giant staircase doesn't do it for you, but signage is a good idea, directing people to the back.
Right.
Nope, I don't have any further questions. Thanks.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, you're going to have to put a light fixture or some sort of light on that new addition because you have exterior doors.
There, there's existing lighting in that area that covers that really well.
Well, we're going to see that in a photo back there.
Okay.
And you're moving, which pole are you moving?
Well, that's, it's so confusing because those poles, those were about seven foot high post lights that haven't been operating for probably about 15 years. They just were, as we redo the sidewalk, they're, they're direct burial. So to remove them, we have to remove the concrete. And that's what we'll be doing to put the, the change in the concrete. So it's all ADA access into the building. So it's, it's right approximately where that handicap ramp is coming off the parking lot. I think a little to the right of that is. Yes, that the existing post light that's coming out, not.
Am I on the wrong plan? Is there another one?
So you can actually see it. See that little red dot right next to the? That's the light fixture that's getting removed. And it's, it's the equivalent of a low voltage accent light. So it wasn't, it's not a parking lot light. It's not a, a post light. It is essentially just a, an accent carriage light. And then. Right, there's existing, right, so the building itself is an existing structure and it currently has a doorway with a light on it that I believe the lighting there, right, they have wall packs that are currently there that would meet all the requirements of the entry and egress light. Not. No, there's a, there is a light there. Actually, I think if we could open up the architecturals. The, the largest thing is, while it is an addition, it's, the totality is about 300 square feet. But this is a well lit, existing area. And the architecture team did not feel that they needed additional lighting to meet codes for egress. So the feeling is between the canopy light for the pet store as well as the building, the existing building lightage, that enough lighted, lighting exists to meet all the requirements. Right, but is the standard to, and, and I appreciate that, but with this being a 300 square foot addition as a photometric for the entire site, it would be a retroactive.
You're moving a, you're moving a light. You're adding a new addition with a door on one side of that addition, so it's not coming off the building. At least have the, the drawing to indicate where, where the lights are would be helpful, but, you know, given the fact that this is now ADA, you could have some fills in mobility and I want to make sure there's enough light.
And I'll just sort of offer to, to your question, you know, when, when an application comes in for site plan, it sort of opens up everything. Typically, staff, the board do.
Sure.
Try to measure out, okay, what's the, what's appropriate and applicable? Site lighting is one that the planning board for the last number of years has found to be one of those that this is our opportunity to maybe correct some things with regards to site lighting. So.
Sure. So is the request, and I think you probably have it in, in there, is a request that maybe a condition of approval that the staff review a photometric plan. Would that be an acceptable?
I'm, the more the conversation goes on, the more uneasy I am. We have not seen, while, while you've made a lot of corrections and gotten them to Jay, Jay hasn't had a chance to look at them, I don't believe. We haven't seen them. Rick raises a very valid point about, uh, in, ensuring that there is adequate lighting, uh, in, in an area that's going to be used, uh, by, for handicapped accessibility. And that's a concern. And Jay has noted that once something like this happens and we have a site plan review, um, a lot of things are opened.
Sure.
So I would suggest to the board that, um, what might be appropriate. I, we've raised a lot of the, the issues. I don't think it would take long to have a discussion next time rather than a consent item. But have a, a discussion next time with seeing, after seeing all of the, all of the changes. Uh, and is everything satisfied, if everything is satisfactory, I don't see, uh, difficulty with this going through next time. But we really need to take a look, uh, at those areas that have, um, that have been brought up. I think, uh, also, the fire department has noted that, um, there would be likely, uh, upgrades for the sprinkler. This would be your opportunity to, uh, work with the fire department. And they've also noted that if there's any range type appliances in the kitchens, a hood system will be required. In other words, this is your opportunity to really clean up the, the application and bring it to us next time completed. And I, I think then we, the board would be in a lot more comfortable.
Sure. I appreciate, um, the feedback, Madam Chair and, and members of the board. I think one of the concerns this applicant, um, faces is that we are narrowing towards the winter construction window. Um, and they do have some site work to do. And this originally came as a building permit request. Because of its small nature, it was upgraded, um, to site plan because it's a previously approved site plan amendment. The, the process has been significant, um, for a small addition, for a stair tower and accessibility. I would be disappointed to see that they missed the construction window and this goes another year for want of adding a, a light fixture and, and the review of some response to comments. So if I could ask for some consideration for a condition of approval for the staff to allow this to move forward so that they're not waiting, um, past November to start construction, that would be very meaningful and impactful.
Jay, when is our next meeting?
Three weeks, so I believe that's November, November 1st.
Well, let me talk, I asked the board, is November 1st a reasonable time for them to, to wait? I know that's putting a, a burden on you, but, um, I, the, the question is, are you comfortable enough to send this to consent? Or would you like to see, uh, have a chance really to review the materials of, of the changed application? Roger.
Yeah, um, yeah, Steve, are you asking for, um, a motion tonight with conditions?
I would like to think after being in town for 50 years and coming through everything we do when we get approval, it's not our first time to the board. I understand, um, you know, the board's position, but I, I think, you know, that we could, our reputation might prove, you know, helpful in this case where we, we do what we say. I mean, if, you know, we're not going to do anything that the planning staff isn't happy with. But to have to wait three more weeks, or I, I think it's just a little excessive for this type of development. I understand if it's a large subdivision and there's hundreds of items open. The items that are left are very small in comparison. So I, I just would hope that the board could see into it that maybe, you know, these things will be addressed. I guarantee that will be addressed, but that, you know, maybe that we could get a conditional approval this evening. Thank you.
Could I, could I ask, uh, Jay a question?
Sure, go ahead.
Other, other than the lighting, which I think is, is important, and I think that could be handled through staff. What else is there? I know, and I appreciate the fact that you just received some comments today. Is there anything that you feel that the board has to deal with that couldn't be handled by the, uh, by staff?
I guess my response, uh, Rogers, you know, we will act at the discretion of the board. If the board's comfortable with what you've heard tonight, um, I think staff can, can certainly move this forward as by reviewing plans at our level. So it's really a, a matter of, of the board's comfort level. As I said, our staff comments were fairly limited. It was really about, you know, the discrepancy in the, in the, in the narratives. I think that can be addressed, understanding the storage space, which has been described. And, and at this point, I'm really hearing about lighting and, and so again, we're, we'll act at the discretion of the board.
I, I guess, um, my position would, would be that this is a relatively minor change occurring here. And, um, I personally, I think the staff could, and any concerns that are are raised, it probably could be handled by the staff. I mean, you know, it is getting late in the season now, so I, I guess I'll just leave my comments. I think, yeah, I think everybody understands where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Roger. Um, Jen or Rick?
I, I'm okay with, um, staff taking, um, that, the lighting issue on. I'm fairly confident that they could tackle that and come out with a positive result.
Uh, my, my question actually i- is in the line of, are, are you interested in this as a consent item for next time? Or are you comfortable passing it tonight? There's no, there's no such thing as a conditional approval. We approve with findings and conditions, but that's not, that's a final approval in a sense. We don't do conditional approvals. Once we have a draft motion, it approves the project. There are conditions in there, but the project is approved, assuming those conditions then are, are met. Jen?
Uh, I, I think, I think what I'm hearing, I totally understand the simple, you know, the relatively small scale nature of, of what you're proposing. And I feel like anecdotally, we're all generally aware that it's a well lit area. I, so I, I do think it's important to take a look at, I think it's important that we understand what you're doing to like that back entrance, because from what I'm seeing and what's on, what we can tell is on the, the back of the building now, you're going to be changing that significantly by, just by the orientation of the addition that you're proposing. But if, uh, if, if it is truly minor in nature, and it sounds like, um, the whole board members are comfortable that, um, that, you know, that, that putting forth a response, response to that information is something that the, the staff can, um, feel comfortable moving ahead with and with that too.
So not as an item of consent?
Right.
All right, um, I'm not comfortable with it, but I'm not going to, at this point, vote against it. We have a draft motion. I move to approve the site plan by JDR Trust as depicted on the plan set prepared by Sebagot Technics dated 9/13/21 with the following findings and conditions. Finding, the proposed site plan is for a stairwell addition to accommodate reconfiguration of the space within the existing building at 225 US Route One. The project is located within the Town and Village Center, TVC Zoning District. Conditions, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall, A, update the file on record to clarify the noted discrepancy in the staff memo. B, provide evidence that existing light fixtures on site, a full cutoff fixture, or replace the fixtures accordingly. And provide an updated photometrics plan demonstrating adequate site lighting. C, revise the building plans to depict the full footprint and floor path plan of the existing building, including the storage area that was not shown on the materials provided. A note shall be added to the plan that the storage area may only be used for the approved use. Any changes will require additional site plan review and consideration. D, update the plan set to include a detail of the proposed drip edge and location of catch basin protection installations. These shall be reviewed and approved by the planning department. Two, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall coordinate a pre-construction meeting. The meeting shall include appropriate town staff, the developer, and their site contractor, and is to be coordinated through the planning department. All plan modifications are to be completed prior to scheduling the pre-construction meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Additional comments? All right, Doreen, please call the roll.
Rachel Hendrickson?
No.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Lad?
Yes, Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
It passes. Um, just in general, let me make the comment that while we understand the need to get something done before the snow flies in Maine, that is actually not anything in the ordinances or the rules that the, uh, planning board considers.
Thank you.
Next item. Item number nine, Gray's General Contracting, Inc. requests a site inventory and analysis review for 94 Running Hill Road Assessors Map R36 Lot 4. Jay?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the applicant's proposing really a, a simple lot split of an existing single family house lot. However, the lot exceeds five acres. And the lot is in the Running Hill Road District, zoning district. The Running Hill Road Zoning District requires that any lot as of a certain date in 2008, that's greater than five acres. If there's any lot division, it requires plan development. As planning board members will note, the plan development process really envisions quite a different scenario than what we have before us. So it's, um, not the greatest fit, but it's the one that we have and the one that we need to apply. So there's really three steps in the process. There's a site inventory analysis that's intended to articulate or demonstrate sort of where the buildable areas of a lot are and where areas that might be challenged either through existing conditions or natural constraints might be. And then, once the site inventory is completed, we move to a master plan that lays out a conceptual design, if you will, of the development. In this case, the design is the lot split. So sort of recognizing sort of the limited scope of the project we have before us in consultation with the town's attorney, to sort of identify that, you know, if the board is so, uh, is amenable, i- and if you're comfortable with the design of the lot split, that it, you know, isn't prohibiting future development of the sites, that a condition could be considered that would require any, uh, further development of the remaining land, which I believe is called the West Lot, to be, to require plan development process, sort of starting at step one, if you will. Or any change of use of the remaining two acre house lot, also required to go through plan development. So with that in mind, we've drafted a motion for your consideration, and I will turn it back to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And for the developer?
Good evening. I, I haven't presented in a long time.
Please, if you could, please give us your name.
It's Keith Gray. No, I just, I was just simply saying, this is like, this isn't what I wanted. I wanted to present like a nice development and stuff, but this is simply just a, a lot split. The existing lot will be 1.84 acres. The remaining lot will be 10.28 retained as land by the applicant.
All right, thank you. Uh, this is also subject to, um, a public hearing. Nobody? Anybody on, online? No? All right, uh, let us, let me turn this over, uh, to the board. Does anybody have any questions on this? All right, hearing none. I do have one observation, and that is, uh, at some point, you're going to have to engage in renumbering. Either you're going to be building a street in that larger lot, or, um, you're going to be putting something else that is fronting on, on, uh, Running Hill Road. So at some point, you probably want to get in touch with the, the police department and see if there are any issues of the numbering out there.
Okay, thank you.
All right, hearing nothing else, I have a motion. I move to approve master plan of 90, of 94 Running Hill Road as proposed by Gray's General Contracting for the division of land with the conditions of approval that prior to any development of the West Lot or change of use of the House Lot, such activity will be required to be fully reviewed through the requirements for plan developments or applicable standard at the time. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Rick Minkin. Does the board have any additional questions or observations?
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll be abstaining from this vote, the work fee up.
All right, thank you. Uh, Jen Lad, please note that Jen Lad has abstained from this vote. Doreen, call the roll, minus Jen.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Three votes says that it passes. Congratulations, and we'll see you again, I think. All right, item number 10. CPRC Investment Properties LLC requests a subdivision amendment review for 36 Pleasant Hill Road Assessors Map R77 Lot 7. Jay?
Uh, yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Let's see, so this is a, another fairly straightforward application. And the, the reason the applicant is before you is they are proposing a lot line adjustment and land conveyance within an existing subdivision. So, um, you know, staff has reviewed this, the properties are in the industrial district, and we have no further comments and have prepared a motion, a very short, succinct motion, uh, should the board be, uh, so inclined.
All right, thank you, for the developer.
Thank you, Drew Gagnon with Goral Palmer, um, on behalf of CPRC Investment Properties LLC. John Adelman is also, uh, with us virtually if any questions pop up. And I'll have much more to add. I'm filling in for Steve Bushy tonight, who's on vacation. Um, it's just a simple lot line and conveyance from the CPRC parcel to the Phil Mike LLC parcel, meaning all the zoning requirements of the industrial district. Happy to answer any questions the best I can. Um, again, I have no more. Ted, thank you.
Uh, this is subject to a public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to say something? Hearing none to the board. No comments. I will read the draft motion. I move to approve the proposed third amended, amended subdivision of CPRC Investment Properties LLC for the land transfer between adjoining properties. Is there a second?
Second.
There is hearing a second. No further comments. Doreen, please call the roll.
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Lad?
Yes.
And Rick Minkin.
Yes.
Thank you. It passes. Uh, we usually break around, uh, 8:30, but I, I would suggest that we just take a brief break now. We've taken care of a lot of business. So five minutes break from whatever time your watch says now. So five minutes break from whatever time your watch says now. Planning Board is back in session. Next item on the agenda. Three Diamonds Realty requests a preliminary subdivision review for twenty-five Higas Parkway assessors map R fifty lot thirty-four A. Jay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As you just noticed, noted, this is a subdivision review in the Higas Parkway zoning district. This is a property that was before you back in the summer, going through the plan development review process. You're now at the third step of a three-step process. So the applicant's been through the site inventory analysis and then the master plan approval, which was received this summer. And now the before you for the formal subdivision where we really dig into the, to the specific details of the project. So, so let's see, you've received host of staff comments and really, you know, there were some foundational questions that we had as we started our review. So we stayed somewhat high level and didn't get into a detailed review of all the sort of technical details because we see that there, there may be some additional work that needs to occur as we move forward. And so a couple of the items that we noted is as part of the process, the board's to find that the subdivision is consistent with the approved master plan. And there didn't seem to be evidence in the record that discussed this, this step. Also noted that as part of that process, you'll recall that the master plan actually included additional properties where we talked about maximum residential densities and the, and the commercial to residential ratios. And we were unable to find information discussing that. And then as we go through the Higas Parkway district and the design elements that are to be considered as part of the plan development process sort of highlighted as we get into some little bit deeper level of details, looking for cohesive streetscape buffers along the Higas Parkway internal road network, opportunities for creating pedestrian connections along the adjacent roadways, establishing unified or coordinated architectural lighting and signage themes throughout the development. And then also the, the standard around the protection of significant wetlands. And so looking for some additional information, particularly with regards to the comments from the main IF and W regarding a veronal pools analysis. We've been, I saw the wetlands mapping, but not necessarily report. So just curious where that stands. And then, you know, just also note that outside of our review process, the applicant has recently submitted to both the DEP and DOT. This is going to require a DOT traffic movement permit, my understanding. And so that process is just starting underway. So there's some obvious time that that takes as board members are well aware of. So I think for now, I'll, that'll be the extent of my presentation. Of course, staff's here to answer questions.
Thank you, Jay. And for the applicant?
Good evening, everyone. Jason Vafiatus, Atlantic Resource Consultants. Jay, you did a good job with the knuckleball there. It's a, this project's a little complicated. As you know, we did the, the master plan approval over the course of the last, oh, I think fourteen or fifteen months. So now we're actually into the stuff that I somewhat consider myself good at, actual engineering design. Not really a planner, but as Jay pointed out, you know, there are a number of planning elements that we sort of have to weigh as we go through this. So I'm just going to update you on the, the other permitting processes as, as Jay sort of alluded to. We do need a traffic movement permit. That permit has been submitted. The application has been submitted. It is under review by Randy over at the Southern Maine Regional Office. We will be probably scheduling a scoping meeting within the next six weeks, I would think, Jay, about that. So the town staff will get notification of that. And at that meeting, a lot of the meat and potatoes of what some of Jay's comments are, we're going to have to discuss as far as infrastructure, sort of tie-ins as we go specifically to pedestrian movements from the, from this subdivision onto the public roadways and as well as traffic improvements. As you know, the traffic movement permit may require off-site vehicular improvements. I don't see that we're going to get away from not having to do that. I think that there are going to be some traffic improvements done here as Bill Bray points out in his, his review memo. So as Jay said, that process is ongoing. We know that's not a quick process. Primarily, we're here, we submitted just to get a couple of items in front of you so that we can have a little direction with regards to, there's a number of comments in here relating to the lots development itself. We're not, currently right now, we're not proposing any uses, but we were considering doing a sort of, if you remember Enterprise Business Park, and I don't know, a couple of you were here for that. They actually have a pretty robust homeowners, not homeowners, but like a condo association, not even that, I don't even know what you'd call it, design standards within the park where they have specific lighting standards, landscape standards, these types of things. I think given the uncertainty with what's coming in behind the infrastructure with some, you know, with, with the proposed uses, would the board be open to sort of setting up one of those where it's actually approved as part of the subdivision plan? It's recorded. People know that they have certain standards they have to meet in the lots. It's kind of spelled out for them. Then when someone comes in with a site plan, we may not even be the engineers, but you're going to have that document that says, well, you know, according to here, you must meet this type of thing. I think that's really a good point to start with. Curious to get your thoughts on that. And then, as Jay mentioned, the DEP permitting. So if you recall, this site actually has a site location permit already on board and it actually has a NRP permit as well. We're not proposing any changes outside of those permits. So, Jay, I'm curious, I don't think we submitted to the DEP for this. So if we did, it'd be in your office. But so we, in the conversations, we've had pre-apps with the DEP and they said, as long as you're not exceeding the limits of your previous permit, you're good when you come in with a site application. We just have to do a condition compliance or if there are changes, then it's a, then it's a major amendment. So right now, it's primarily MDOT that we're trying to get out of the way.
And I likely overstated the, the DEP just, again, with the complex layers and the extended history of this project. You know, certain details get, get hazy in time. So I apologize.
No, it, it's a solid assumption. You're right. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. And just as a side note to that, so as far as the, the NRP permit was approved with a certain amount of wetland fills on each of the lots that are shown and part of that included the infrastructure, we are within that number that was previously permitted. So we don't need to amend that permit for the infrastructure. And a particular lot, if they fill more than their given fills, then they would have to amend that permit.
Thank you. This is subject to public comment. Do we have anybody willing to rush the podium in, in the room? Or online? All right, thank you. Let me just take a stab at your question of ours and then hear from the rest of the board. And in terms of coming up with kind of standards for the whole development, when we did that with the Crossroads folks, we actually had a pretty extensive workshop in which we went back and forth on what we were looking for, what they thought would be standards and how that would be done. It's not something that's immediate. It's not something that's easy. Speaking as, as one board member, I don't see a problem with that with the understanding we would ultimately both have to agree. And if we can't come to an agreement on what that looks like, we're back to what the regular guidelines are. That's me. So let me turn that question over to the, the rest of the board and see where they are on that.
I immediately thought about the crossroads too when Jason brought that up. But my thinking regarding that is the crossroads, I mean, everything is pretty close. I mean, there's a lot of close, you know, development there. This is going to be, there's going to be quite a bit of separation between these different developments. And I, I don't know, I, I think it might be more advantageous to let each one be, you know, be judged on its own basis. I don't, I don't know. Do you have some comments on that, Jay?
Yeah, I just, just want to remind the board that the Higas Parkway district zoning district does seek the coordinated elements. And so I guess, you know, it's, it's really at a high level, right? I don't think we're going to get into what type of corn is every building's going to have, but maybe it's, you know, our distinguished board member at the end will, will be interested in a certain lumen of light that every, everyone's going to have. Or that we talk about a common streetscape along Higas Parkway. We have two individual lots. Do we want to have one person doing oaks and the other doing maples, you know? Or do we try to coordinate that a little bit? And what do we do down the main corridor? So I think it's really, it is fairly broad in scope. We're not getting necessarily down to exact location of light fixtures on everyone's parcel. But hey, it's got to be three K lumens or whatever that thing is. I don't quite understand. So, so I, I think that's, and so, yeah, I think between this application and the next application, maybe staff can work with the applicant and its representative and sort of work out some of those elements and bring those forward for the board to chew on.
And if, just to put my two cents in here, maybe as a suggestion, maybe we start with, we'll come up with them. And then, because if you recall in the, in the master plan narrative, there actually, there is some sort of guidance as to what, what we're going to do. And it's mostly tied to your design standards and your ordinances anyway. And I hope David Miley's not watching, but I did sort of rob a little bit from the Enterprise Business Park since we're working on that. So I, I think with the crossroads project, I mean, that's the town's, you know, that's, that's the future of the town. So I think that that one probably should have got a lot more thorough sort of discussion and review. Whereas here, we're talking seven or eight commercial lots, potentially with a couple residential per the master plan. I think, and as Roger said, they're spaced out. I think that if we maybe focus on, maybe we provide a landscape standard with fifty feet from the right of way where certain number of trees and you have to be these species and, you know, that sort of thing. I think we can kind of create the framework where the, the design standards within the park sort of meets a homogenous kind of look for the town that the town can approve or not approve, but, you know, get behind. And then they can kind of be tied to the site developments as they come along, come onboard.
Let's hear from Jen and, or Rick, or folks.
I'm not, having been part of a process like that here just yet, I think that, I think that sounds like a reasonable approach to this. This lot and its potential for being subdivided and, you know, what that looks like on the spectrum of, of impacts overall to the town. So like, you know, the point you made about crossroads versus something that's just, you know, one or two properties. I do, I think that's, I think that makes some sense and preemptively appreciate your first go around at that. Give us some, a, a starting point to jump off from.
I'll ditto, ditto her comments. I think if you come up with something that we can kind of get our heads wrapped around and maybe conceptually see what that would be. I think we could work something like that. I think it's a, it's a great, it gives us a great opportunity. Gives the town a little bit of say too on, on some of the elements that we feel are important for the character of the town. And with having the new comprehensive plan, this might be, you know, utilizing that as a framework. You know, take a look at that when you're You know, take a look at that when you're coming up with your suggestions and I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, the, I, I guess the, the only sort of concern I have is that that sort of a discussion lends itself more to a workshop than it does to a hearing as this is. So that's why I, I suggested that certainly bring something to the workshop, I would hope, that we might want to try that, go that way first rather than work out the design while we're sitting here and you're standing there and we're staring at you. So I just, I, I don't know if the, the board is interested or thinks that, that a workshop might be the way to approach this process. And then we will have something that actually comes before us that we have, that, that we already understand and we can, we can deal with.
In the long run, I think that'll save us time down the road as we look at the individual lots.
Okay.
I think it would be time well spent.
Yeah. And I'm all for unclogging your agendas for, you know, these types of things. So, yeah, no, I, I think that makes perfect sense. And one of the things I think maybe we need to wait a little bit on, Lynn would kick me in the butt for saying that though, is I really need to get this MDOT process going to know, you know, are, are we putting in a, a, Jay's going to kick me for saying this, you know, are we getting a multi-use designated trail on Higas, you know, eventually, which I've been championing? That's, you know, eight to 10 feet wide and, and in the right of way, do we tie into that? Do our, do our sidewalks then become sort of separated out as being more, you know, esplanade and away from the road versus, so. Yeah, I think that there's some stuff that we need to sort of think about because we also don't want, you know, going to speak for my client, we don't want this to be too prohibitive as far as, you know, what we, what someone coming in that's, you know, weren't, these are on the market that they can do in the property. So I think I've already got some good ideas about how we can kind of make that work. So. And I think a workshop's a good place to kind of get a lot of this discussion out of the way. So when we come back.
I, I think you do have, we do have some time because MDOT is not known for speed.
You said that I didn't.
In terms of a, a TMP. And I assume you don't want to start breaking ground on November 1st.
Maybe next year.
Yeah. So, so I, I think we do have, have in a sense, the luxury of really digging into this and, and make, making sure that the end product is something that everybody is going to want to participate in and, and to be there and to move into and buy space and that the town is going to be very proud that, that we have it there. So let me ask you, as you look at the comments that Jay had, is there something else that you would like to talk about as a preliminary discussion? Clearly this isn't going to pass tonight. So let's, let's take a, let's take a look at preliminary discussions. Just so you know, when you said that you're going to go before, or you're going to work with DEP to ensure that they, they're going to want to see that the wetlands now are what they were before, or they, we would like to see that sort of thing too.
Sure.
To make sure that we're not approving something that DEP said, or is going to say, wait a minute. So that, in other words, that their, their approval is, is still good. But, okay, let's, is there something else that you would like to talk about tonight that you think we can provide you with some assistance on as you start to really develop this? And Jay, I saw you reaching for your, your, your light. Do you have something?
Well, I'll, I'll let the applicant ask his question first and maybe it's the same one I have.
Okay.
Yeah. So, so with regard to the wetlands, so the DEP, they don't, every, they require it to be done within five years. So wetlands and, and vernal pool studies. And I think this was one of Jay's comments. I believe we did do a vernal pool scan when we did the wetlands and none of them had enough eggs to count. And I think it needs to be six egg masses per, per. There were a couple with like two or three, but none of them met the definition of DEP's definition of a vernal pool. Now Army Corps of Engineers, if you get one, it's their definition of a vernal pool. So, and I have to go back to the report to see where those were because I think that we typically just assume that Army Corps of Engineers now only has designation over the pool itself. So if we're not impacting them, then Army Corps of Engineers is out of it. They have a different, some of the local guys have a different opinion of that because they already have a permit. Therefore they try to drag it all back in. So nothing we need to hash out up here, but I think we'll get sort of more guidance from them. So when we come back to you, you know, we'll have a letter or something that says, you know, this, so, and with DEP, with their workload right now, they, we can't just send them a plan and say, oh, by the way, the wetlands, you know, have been updated. Here they are. They would typically look at that when we go in for an amendment. So I think just for this level, we'll submit the wetlands report and maybe I can do like a quick thing where it showed the old wetlands and the new wetlands and why they've changed would be in our report, that type of thing. Because it's, it is interesting. They did shift a little bit. And I suspect a lot of it has to do with the sort of the revised sort of LIDAR we have now and all that stuff.
And, and do you have, I didn't see in, in the application, I saw that the, the wetlands were redelineated in, in 2019, so pretty recently. Was there a wetlands report that was done? I think that'd be helpful.
Yes, we'll get you that.
That'd be great. And the other question I was going to ask, and I think it was one of the sort of main elements I, I felt we needed to talk through was there's two lots that sort of discussed as being almost bifurcated, if you will, a lot one, and I can't remember maybe three, four or five. And I think lot one, I think might be have a little bit more to talk about than the other one. Three. So lot one is the front lot right up at Higas. And that but for the area that's bifurcated, it looks like you have two good upland pockets, I think. Lot three, it appears the part to the, I'll say plan north, if you will, is largely wetlands and probably isn't very developable anyway. But that's probably worth some discussion tonight, just to get a sense of where you're thinking and what the board's thoughts are.
Yeah. Yeah. So I was hoping you wouldn't make me talk about this. So.
And, and lot three, of course, has that drainage easement, which you've also indicated might be a connection, possible connection to, to the Enterprise Park. So that would be helpful to hear. And also a little bit more about the utility easement to Route One.
Yep. So the, oop, you got me there, the utility easement to Route One. Oh, so that was, yeah. So, so, yeah. So that originally, if you recall, that used to be part of this parcel, I think in the original approval or, well, this segment doesn't have it. But in the old surveys you had on record, there was a 30 foot, I believe that's a 30 foot strip that went to Route One, that was transferred to in a butter back in 2014, maybe 2013. But my client kept the ability to, at that, geez, I'm getting my times all messed up. I think we kept that ability in case we had to run a utility to, to get access to Route One. We kept the ability to do that. We don't need any kind of access to Route One now. All the utilities that we would need are on Higas Parkway. So that's just sort of there for the taking. Now, I'd have to research the easement if you were looking for something superficial to get like a sidewalk connection or something like that, which is something that I've toyed around with. The easement to the, the south of the cul-de-sac. So that's mislabeled as a drainage easement, although it would serve as a drainage easement. That is a future connection. So that's just an easement to be that Enterprise Business Park can connect through there. I think in your subdivision standards, you're typically supposed to provide connectivity to larger budding parcels. Just kind of makes sense from a land planning perspective to, to have that. It gives Enterprise Business Park an outlet to Higas Parkway that, where they don't have to come out on to Route One. With regards to the lots, the lot configuration that we have, we inherited and that is actually tied to the DEP approval. So for, say we want to build the infrastructure to, to entice people to come in and build, we couldn't change the lot lines that the DEP has currently on file in, in the site location approv, approval. Cause that's actually technically, that is a major amendment. And they, that could take them a long time to sort of work through. So the workaround that Lynn and I have come up with is that we, we leave the lots as they have been previously approved by the DEP and then use, and it needed a little more fleshing out, use shared access easement. So I believe it's lots five and one, two, three, four and five could probably share an access. So lot five has a lot of, you don't see it on this plan, has a lot of wetlands to the north and all the usable land runs along the shared lot line with lot four. Yeah, you want the existing condition that might show a little bit. Yeah. Scroll up a little more. Yeah, it's not showing well. That's on me. Yeah, that's, so the, the, the landscape plan shows it a little bit. So, yeah, so you'll see the, the lot line to the top right of the plan. If we come in, in that area, we would just share the access to get to the uplands with, with lot. I've got my numbers all messed up. No, lot five. Yep. Gotta have my eyes checked. So lot of, you know, this type of thing I, I consider sort of, we'll figure out the big stuff first and, and then we'll get that and we'll sort of get that sorted out. But as we're talking about lot one, yeah, that, that is another one that sort of, we inherited a lot line that may not make sense now with the new mapping. And so given the, the timelines and everything, we might go back and kick that around again and just see if there's ways that we can address that sort of, maybe we do two entrances or something for a future sort of access or we'll, we'll, I'll come up with something good for that. So.
You know how happy we are about two entrances.
Yeah, I know.
Is there something else?
I think that covered it. I don't see anything in my notes.
Board members?
I just, on, on the second bullet regarding the maximum residential density and square footage. Jay, is this similar to what we, the discussion we had with the enterprise business? Is that what you're getting at there?
Yep. And it's actually the discussion you had with this project back in the summer and part of the master plan approval sort of set up. If you remember when Enterprise Business Park originally came to you three to five years ago, the language was really tricky to work with because you really had to maintain that 60-40 commercial residential split. And as part of that process, council ultimately wound up taking a look at the zoning and enabled or made some changes that enabled the 60-40 commercial to residential ratio to be developed based on a conceptual layout. And that's really what was established as part of the master plan. And so that's part of, going back to the first bullet, we need to be sure we're being consistent with that master plan and understand what we're tying to. So that additional lot. So it all sort of folds in together, Roger.
Sure.
But yes, it is.
Okay.
The, the basic question, yes, it's similar to what we looked at with Enterprise and certainly what we looked at as master plan with this project.
Just for my clarification. Colby's property is not part of this whole equation. Is that correct? Or is it?
It no longer is. It originally was part of a previous approval that is tied to, to this.
So basically, it would be the, you know, you know, the, the lot that the restaurant was going to be going in, is that part of this?
Nope. That was, so not common ownership. So that was sold. Then I believe you had an application in front of you. I don't think it was approved. And yeah, so that's, it would, it, that, that ship left. Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'm, I'm all set.
But Roger, just to be, it's that undeveloped parcel, actually not only undeveloped because the, the restaurant is also undeveloped. The, the parcel that is closer to this development, it, but has a shared access with the restaurant site, that was part of this project's master plan. Cause that was what was contemplated to, to occupy some of the residential. So that's sort of the tie that we need these pieces to come together. But I think, you know, but then that specific development is going to be separate from.
Just throwing this out there, Jay, does it make sense to show those parcels on the plat, plan and then reference them in as not? See, this is.
I think it's a, it's a question for, for us, I think, to have a legal opinion as to how do we tie these parcels to this, because it is certainly unique. So.
Certainly, it certainly needs a note anyway.
Yes, it's certainly minimally a note. Yes.
And I don't know, so in this situation, I haven't been here before and I don't know that you folks have either, where you have a master plan approval draped over three separate parcels, but we're only subdividing one parcel. Do we need to somehow reference the maximum commercial slash residential build out? And is that a note? Is it a, a reference to another plan that gets, yeah, it's, this is, this thing's got a lot of moving pieces.
Yeah. I think even before the workshop, staff probably needs to have a sit down with the, with the applicant's representative to go over some of these issues as well. And I think this was a good, good starting point for the discussion for sure.
So now you know why we turned it in so early because it's, it's going to be some hurdles.
I, I think from the, from the board's perspective, the more, that more preliminary groundwork is done and understandings reached or these issues clarified with the staff and the, and the developer. In some ways, the easier it is for us to really review and come to a decision. If we end up terribly confused, we're simply going to look at you and say, something's got to be fixed. And that's not a position we want to be in. I, I think this is a good meeting that's laid some preliminary groundwork. I, I think, are you working with Jay? And the planning staff in answering some of these kind of foundational questions? And then working, it seems to me as though the stormwater, the wetlands certainly a, a very important part of, of, of some preliminary work that, that really needs to be, to be settled. We need, need to ensure that the master plan and this plan are, are consistent. So the more care you take in showing that, the more clarity there is, the better off we all are on that. So I, I can't, I, I cannot over emphasize the importance of your working this through with the, the planning staff. Because then when it gets to us, we have a lot of questions that have already been answered. And you're in a much better position to, to bring the more complete version to us and something that stands an opportunity to get through faster. So is there anything else from the board or the developer or the staff? If we're clear, then the planning staff can work with you on a workshop at some point, I gather. That's not coming up instantly because you, you really do need to have some preliminary discussions, but we can take a look then at the landscaping, the lighting and some other common elements that would, would smooth the way, since a, a developer or somebody coming in to take one of these lots has a clear understanding of what their expectations are. So thank you very much. Appreciate your, your willingness to work on this and your willingness not to start on November 1st. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, number 12, MMC Realty Corporation requests a site plan amendment review for 100 Campus Drive Assessors Map R76 Lot 6.
Okay, this is a project back to the scale of the first four or five or six items that we reviewed tonight. The applicant is proposing in addition for a solarium at 100 Campus Drive. Some board members may recall, it's been some, quite some years, but there was actually a, a solarium approved on the other side of the building some years ago. So this is very similar in some respects. Staff has reviewed the application and really we have very. Um, and really we have very minimal comments at this point. Uh, really just looking to be sure the existing condition plan is updated and it shows what the existing conditions are. And Woodard and Curran did have a few, uh, detailed comments to, to address, but they were again also fairly minor in nature. So, um, based on your discussion, the board is so inclined, staff has prepared a motion for your consideration.
Thank you. And for the developer.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amy Siegel. I'm a senior landscape architect at Spago Technics. And I'm here just to give you a bit of an update on the submission. So, uh, the first comment that Jay referenced is the fact that this existing conditions plan doesn't represent. Uh, the existing solarium that's located, you can see my paw here, it's kind of on, on the southern side of the building. I think it was around two thousand twelve where they extended their entrance to cover the sidewalk and then they added a solarium. So this solarium, um, I have a photograph of it, which makes it super easy to see here. This is the existing one. And, um, it's going to be the exact same piece of architecture. Um, with the same roof, uh, roofline, overhang, columns and windows. You can see in this picture here, uh, they planted, at that time, they put a, a line of perennial grasses here in the front. And some flowering roses and some evergreens on the side. Um, but it's still fairly, uh, open or exposed to the parking lot, as you can see. So, uh, when we submitted our application, we showed a, a simple, similar landscape plan. And I'm just going to bump over to it here and, um, which was just, I used evergreens and some grasses. Uh, but, um, it was, uh, the staff, the providers, the doctors and nurses. Thought that it was a missed opportunity. So I want to show you some revised landscaping plan, um, which I think is pretty exciting. So, um, I'll do that in a second here. I wanted to back up and, um, also talk about grading utilities, which is pretty simple here. There is an existing, you can see the parking spaces here as there's four parking spaces in the drive access drive that comes into the, the parking lot in the, in the rear. And there is a catch basin here and a storm drain that runs right through the site and connects to a storm drain here in the parking lot. So that with the solarium, obviously we need to move that storm drain. So you can see the dark line represents the relocated storm drain. Um, that's the only utilities being changed. The, there's not a ground, um, electric here and a light that'll stay, um, as it is. Uh, no additional lights will be added. Um, the other component of the drainage is that. There will be a, the under, uh, roof drip edge filter around that has that pat hatch pattern there. So it's a right directly below the, the drip line of the canopy of the roof. And, um, there'll be a perforated under drain, I'm sorry, six inch under drain in there that'll connect into that relocated storm drain. So that's all pretty straightforward. Um, so now I'm just going to jump to, uh. As long as there is any questions with utilities, I can jump back to the landscape plan and talk about that real quick. Okay, so, um, since we submitted the plan initially, uh, to the town. I've had an opportunity to work with the providers, um, who are in this, um, section of this, of the facility at one hundred Campus Drive. And this is the pediatric oncology area. So, uh, they are, they wanted the outdoor space to be a space. That, um, families and kids who are in that solarium can look out at. So it's almost like a stage set, so to speak. Um, there may be an opportunity for some children to be able to come out through here. Um, but for the most part, it's, it's going to be, um. You know, a lot of sort of intimate scale of a lot of detail, you know, things like fairy houses and bird feeders and birdhouses and a lot more. Sort of complexity and richness, um, that the kids will be able to enjoy as they come back over time with their treatments. Uh, the space, the out, you know, it, it will be an evergreen, um, sort of enclosed space. We're going to save, um, there's six trees there now. We'll be able to save three of them, which are deciduous trees. The evergreen trees, I might go back to the, whoops. Let's see here, my photos. Just want to pop back. I have a couple photographs of the site. Okay, so this is, this is stepping back a bit. So that's the corner of the building and you can see that the site currently has six trees that there's, uh, three deciduous and three evergreen. And, um, here. Oops, that's overall site plan. So that's a closer view. So you can see that those three evergreens or the darker trunks there, those will, those will come out. And then the three deciduous trees on the perimeter, um, will, will stay, um, as best as we can. There's this one here in the front may. It's, it's somewhat close to the existing storm drain. So as long as we can kind of protect that while we're relocating the drain around it, we might be able to keep it. So, um, obviously when we take those evergreen trees out and the solarium gets built into that space. Um, you know, it's a problem approximately three hundred square foot slarium and with the drip edge and the roof filter, it's about four hundred and sixty square feet of impervious surface. But, um, you know, it kind of takes up about a third of the space. So it's going to be a small garden. That will be kind of wrapping around that solarium. So it will, um, obviously not have evergreen trees that are that tall because they'll be narrow and tall. Um, but the idea is to enclose it with evergreen shrubs and then add a lot more detail and interest on the inside of it. So folks who are parking in those four spaces or driving around it will see, still see a variety of plant material. But the real interest will be seen from the inside. So again, uh, this is the submittal. That's the, the sketch that came from S M R T. And, um, I think this is just in general is the plan. So I'm not, this is still kind of conceptual. We're still working with the providers, um, on how, what they like to see out there and the scale of the space. So what I would propose to do is submit a final landscape plan to, um, staff to, to review and check off to make sure that it's, um, it works. Um, like I said, there's no additional lighting. Um, we'll make sure that the plant material is tucked in at least four feet. So there's some room for snow, um, to, to be up on the edge of the curb there. And, um, oh, yeah, the other thing to note is that the, the providers do, there's three picnic tables that are out there now. So we're working on integrating those picnic tables and kind of moving so that the staff have a place to go outside. So that's really, that's about it.
Thank you. Uh, this is subject to a public hearing. I'm going to try again. Is there anyone in the room, uh, that would like to comment? Is there anyone online? All right, moving on, uh, board members, do you have any questions or observations?
Um, I have a question. You made reference to potential access to this space from the building. On occasion, and so I was just curious where, I don't, I don't see a door that's jumping out at me anywhere near here. And so I was just wondering how that, um, may be accessible to the. Um, any points of egress.
Right, right. Um, well, there's no direct access from the solarium outside. So, um, we should go back to the, there's an, there's a staff entrance right here. So this is the park, rear parking lot. This is their existing healing garden kind of over on this side here. And this is an existing staff entrance. So, um, they would, uh, be able to bring individuals out. It would, they would always be with staff or family, um, and then come into the, enter the garden into the space and kind of work around it. So there's no, yeah.
That, um, in perhaps this is, perhaps you're not there yet.
Yeah.
Um, with the plan, but I was just curious if there's any sort of hardscape connection between their sidewalk or if you're going to do.
Yeah, we've been thinking about that. Yeah, because currently they have the picnic tables there and they just have them sitting on grass, which is not the easiest thing to maintain. So, um, you know, in this area between, you can see that that's the tip down, that's the curb there. Uh, we've talked about putting a, a sidewalk kind of our walkway along this edge to get into the garden. Um, this plan actually shows an entrance here, but we're, I had a review meeting today and they want to have it over here. So it's much easier to kind of directly go into it and so that nobody's going in and out near the, the corner of the, of the access drive. So, um, so yes, we've talked about having some hardscape to get from the entrance here to picnic tables. That would be sitting in here in this location here for providers and then an entrance into the garden. And then there's a very narrow pathway that goes through there. It, it would be wide enough for, um, you know, a, a child in a wheelchair. Or, um, and staff or family member to be in there, but it's not meant to be, you know, it's, it's not a, um. Play space per se, it's more of a visual space. Um, obviously it'll be safe, but you know, the walkway is, is wide enough for the wheelchair. Um, but it's, and it's also for maintenance in general. So it's pretty minimal walkway.
Sure. I, I just think that is the coolest thing. I, before, um. You know, I was curious what the other solar, solariums were used for there. Um, at, at this facility. And I just think, I'm sure. Families hope that, you know, they never have to be there, but what a great, um, what a great amenity if they.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Uh, I echo, uh, Jen's comment, uh, about what a, a great place for a child who's facing, uh. A real illness, uh, to be able to walk past a fairy house or a birdhouse with the, the birds in there. Uh, and just, just find some peace there. So thank you for bringing this to us. I do have a draft motion.
Rachel, could I ask, um, a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I guess this is the first, I'm seeing like, obviously the enhanced landscaping. And the question that I have is around the storm drain system and, and obviously the bends that are there. Is there a way to clean that out? Are there clean outs there?
Yeah.
And now you're putting, I just want to make sure it's working with the landscaping and that you're not like creating a maintenance issue.
Not putting trees on top of the storm drain. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So there's a, there's a clean out right here, that black square there. And there's another one there that are, those are the two proposed clean outs.
You're just doing bends though on those.
Yeah.
Corners.
Uh, well.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, this is.
Angles.
Yeah, this, the dark line is the, the new angle. Yes, those are, those are bends. So there is not clean outs at each corner. Just the one here and the one here. And again, it's, you know, this is what it's catching, you know, that generally down here with the four parking spaces and kind of a loading, um, service bay there. To. So yes, the idea would be to not plant trees or anything significant on top of any of that.
I guess my only concern would be just like collecting from the parking areas, which is what you're doing is the sand and salt. Um, well, sand through the winter months, trying to collect in something that's trying to get around those bends. Um, but I don't know if that's a large enough pipe. It's a larger pipe though, right?
Yeah, these are twelve inch. Yeah. So yeah, so we have a clean out right here. So let me just, so there's a catch base in there. There's a clean out there.
Might just suggest the board to maybe consider, um, a condition that just talks about maybe a detail associated with those bends. Would that be, just if the board wants to consider that, that's all.
The board editor is, uh, laboriously writing a, uh, a new condition. Uh, that would both address the issue of the landscaping and the, um, the stormwater, the clean out. So if you all just talk amongst yourselves for a couple of minutes, we will have a, a new draft motion. Anybody on the board want to tell a story? Okay. All right, I'm going to read this and Jay is going to poke me when I get it wrong from his scratches. I, I move to approve the proposed solarium site plan amendment for Maine Medical Center at one hundred Campus Drive. As depicted on the plan set dated nine twenty twenty one, conditions prior, prior to the building permit. Number one, address remaining comments as identified in the Woodard and Curran memo dated October first, twenty twenty one. Two, updated, update the existing condition plan sheet. Three, final landscape.
Jump right down here.
All right, fine. Okay, a final landscape plan in detail associated with storm drain bends to be reviewed and approved by staff. Uh, and all of this to be reviewed and approved by the planning staff department.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, any additional comments, questions? All right, Doreen, can you call the roll?
Rachel Hendrickson?
Yes.
Roger Bealy?
Yes.
Jennifer Led?
Yes.
Mick Monkey?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and item number thirteen, KDK Realty LLC requests a preliminary site plan review. The Higas Parkway Assessor's Map R four, lots fourteen A and fourteen B. Jay.
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so this application for the board as part of the applicant's request to amend the contract zone for the subject property. As a few board members will recall, we had a, uh, the start of this process began with a joint hearing with the planning board and town council. To talk about, um, general merits of the request. And now they, as was noted, are before you. For the purpose of a preliminary plan review. So the purpose of the preliminary plan is for the board to determine the proposed use is in general conformance with the site plan review standards. Provide the board finds that, you know, we, you know, um, that the, that the project will generally meet the standards. You'll grant a preliminary, uh, provisional approval subject to town council adoption or amending of the contract zone. Once the contract zone is amended and recorded, the zoning for the property has therefore then been, um, changed. And it can come back to this board for final site plan review. So at this point in the process, you'll have received some staff comments. Um, largely, I think most of these items are items that can be dealt with as we go through the, you know, from preliminary to final site plan review. Um, I think a couple of the items that we just want to flag are particularly around pedestrian connection. I know this has been part of a this, um, prior discussion. And really, uh, just to sort of clarify staff comments, because I, you know, as I sort of reread the memo, there's really sort of two different elements. Uh, occurring here. One, one has to do with the typical expectations for any project that's coming through site plan review along the Higas Parkway. Um, and, and really the standards talk about when there's planned, uh, infrastructure that, um. We develop pedestrian connection along the frontage of, of a project. Um, obviously, you know, this project's been around for quite a while, you know, back two thousand and seven, when the original contract zone was approved. You know, there was commercial development are, uh, considered then in twenty seventeen or eighteen, I can't quite remember the timeframe. When this contract zone amendment came along, uh, we introduced, um, more residential use. And at that time, there really wasn't a plan for, for sidewalks along Higas Parkway. Obviously, we, you know, change in use, we're starting to see, uh, different, um, uh, users out there. And so it, it would seem consistent with the site plan, uh, the standards and Higas Parkway standards. To seek development of, of sidewalk along the frontage of, of the property at this time and consistent with other board approvals in the area. Uh, recent approvals, I should say. Then there's sort of a secondary discussion that really gets more into the realm of the contract zone and into the council's realm. And so, you know, I certainly, um, something to at least consider when the, when looking at the public benefit of the project. And looking at the, the, um, Higas Parkway corridor holistically. And what type of pedestrian connections and amenities are sort of the missing links? And that's really where some of these comments got into. And then there's been discussions about, is there opportunity to gain easement through this property? And there's challenges there that have been represented by the applicant. And if those are sort of a, a burden too high, are there other amenities that might be considered as part of the public benefit process? Again, those are elements to be finally, uh, decided by council, but, um, the process sort of anticipates planning board weighing in where you see. See fit. And, and so I'd be interested in your comments. Outside of that, I think staff has some fairly, you know, um. Low, low fruit, um, low hanging fruit comments around streetscape and lighting. Certainly some details around the stormwater to be worked out, but I think those are engineering details of, you know. not to speak for Angela, that, that can be worked out between preliminary and final. And so I think the only other thing we just want to flag as well is, um, that the existing cemetery on site, um, in, in just having a better understanding of what that condition is going to look like at the, at the end of the project. So I think with that, uh, Madam Chair, I'll turn it back to you, um, the applicant.
Thank you. And for the applicant.
Great. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Bill Fletcher. I'm the attorney for the applicant KDK Realty. I'm here tonight with, uh, other members of the development team, Ben Divine and John Divine of Divine Capital, and Rick Meek with Teradyne Consultants. And Rick and I have a brief presentation and then we'll, uh, welcome any questions. So this, uh, as Jay mentioned, we're here tonight for preliminary provision approval and that'll allow us to go, uh, back to the town council and go through the contract zone process. And then ultimately we'd be back before you for final approval. This historically, and I think it was referenced in the staff memo, um, this parcel along with the Cabela's parcel and the beacon, the existing beacon project is within a contract zone. And that agreement was put in place back in 2007. And then there are a number of amendments. My pressing buttons? Okay. There are a number of amendments. Most of them dealt with the Cabela's build out, but the last amendment, the eighth amendment allowed for, um, the beacon project to be built. That's 288 units. So the project before you tonight is, um, really the final phase. It's structured, um, with a different entity, KDK Realty, um, for legal reasons, um, but it's really phase three of the beacon project. And there's a ninth amendment to the contract zone. It's a draft at this point, but it's in your packet. And it really, provides, uh, the same structure that the eighth amendment provided allows relief from the Higas Parkway requirement that there be mixed use. It allows, um, relief from the density requirement. And then the final thing that it does is it allows for an exemption for the growth permits to the extent necessary. So to the extent that growth permits aren't allowed under, under the town's annual allotment, it'll allow, uh, under the contract zone, um, an exemption for those growth permits. So the project itself, um, is a 48 unit, uh, two garage buildings associated with it. It's shown on this picture. It's the two, if you can picture the street along the front, there is, is Higas Parkway. And it's the two vacant lots on either side of that interior road that leads through, um, leads through the project. And I know this really gets finalized at town council, but some of the benefits associated with the contract zone that we've discussed with town leadership are a $250,000 contribution to the town's affordable housing initiative, two public onsite charging stations for electric vehicles, which provide charging for four vehicles open to the public. A financial contribution to the town's ride share or public transportation initiative of $10,000. And then the easement that Jay had mentioned along, um, Higas Parkway to the extent necessary, um, for a sidewalk. Our hope there is that, um, the sidewalk, uh, would be constructed once that pedestrian walkway is conducted, constructed along Higas Parkway and it isn't just an isolated sidewalk, given the cost involved. And then the last thing I have really is just the interior walkway or interior, um, pedestrian easement that's referenced in the staff memo. That's the interior street that runs through the beacon project itself. The challenge with that and why it's a practical, hurdle for us is that permanent financing is in place. So Fannie Mae holds a long-term mortgage on that property. It doesn't permit the applicant to grant any mortgages without going through a really expensive and, uh, a lengthy process that could take upwards of a year and cost upwards of 50 to 100,000. And it's just not a certain request as a practical matter. We don't know whether it'd be authorized or not. So, um, our hope and our discussions with town leadership is that there are other benefits. For example, the $250,000, um, affordable housing in lieu of payment that can overcome, um, you know, that, that consideration. I, I will say at the time the beacon was granted, that was an option. It was an option for the town to take ownership of those roads or have a public easement. But it was decided that, that the town wasn't interested in that at the time. And so at this point, the permanent financing is in a place. At this point, I'll turn it over to Rick and then we'll field any questions.
Thank you, Bill. Um, as Bill said, I'm Rick Meek with Teradyne Consultants. And as also Bill mentioned, uh, this isn't essentially an expansion to, uh, the beacon. We're proposing, uh, two 24 unit buildings, residential buildings and two garages. These are the two lots. Uh, this is identified as lot two and this is identified as lot three. For consistency with the overall subdivision work or, uh, development, we're calling this, uh, building 13,000. And this building 14,000 is the previous, um, development had 12 buildings, uh, each numbered with a thousand, in a thousand increments. Surface parking and, and the garage parking, um, give, give a total of, uh, at least two parking spaces per, per unit. And the unit mix is, uh, proposed to be, uh, two bedroom, three bedroom and one, and, uh, studio apartments. There aren't going to be no three bedroom units in these two buildings. Uh, as, uh, Bill mentioned, the, the electric, the EV's charging stations, they're, they're to be located here next to, uh, the garage in front of building 14,000. And, and that, that would be available to the public. Uh, architecturally, the, the buildings, uh, are, are consistent with the, what's, what's, what's their existing, uh, the New England colonial architectural style. Uh, this is the front elevation and the rear elevation and the side, side view of the, of the buildings. The massing matches the existing buildings, um, that are in the, in the overall development. With, with the exception of this building is a little bit shorter in length, uh, due to the, the unit mix. The building materials are vinyl clad, clouded siding, um, architectural shingles. The windows and the, and the deck railings, uh, on, on the patios and decks for the units all match the existing buildings within the development. And, and the colors for the, for the siding, um, also match the existing building, um, configuration. Uh, this plan is not going to show up well, but the, the lighting, um, uh, was mentioned in the staff comments, uh, lighting is consistent with, um, the existing lighting in the, in the development, um, with both respect to fixture type and, and mounting height. So there is a photometric plan in your packet that, that shows the, that there's no trespass, uh, on the Higas Parkway property line and the, and the abutting property lines. There is trespass, um, into the existing development just due, due to the proximity of the, of the lights, um, with the, with the property line. Uh, the site itself, itself has access, uh, through, um, via Gateway Boulevard, which is the internal roadway. There's no new connections to Higas or, or Payne Road. And the, the site would generate, as, as, as a traffic analysis indicated, uh, 21 peak hour trips, uh, which is well below the, the permitted trips for this, this site. And, and that, that's, that can, you know, I can certainly answer questions, but that's detailed in the, in the traffic analysis. So this is the site plan for, for lot two. And this is the site plan for lot three. Again, those EV stations, um, with, with the parking layout. Just, uh, a quick note that, uh, uh, there is a, a proposed fire lane on, on the, uh, right side of this building. Similar to what's in, in the, um, overall development to, to provide access to two sides of that, that building, um, for the fire department. In the other, other lot, we have parking on that side, so that meets that, that access requirement. Uh, it's a, a busy plan, but this is the, a grading utility plan. Um, the utilities, uh, provided are, are, uh, public water, sanitary sewer, natural gas, underground power and underground communications, all of which are, uh, connected to or, or extended from the existing infrastructure in Gateway Boulevard. So again, no, no impacts to, to Higas or Payne. Stormwater, as, as, uh, Jay alluded to, um, again, we're, we're adding, uh, there were some existing infrastructure in these two vacant lots. That was constructed back in 2007. Um, we're, we're working, reworking that a little bit, adding a few more catch basins and piping, which all connect to, um, the existing infrastructure in, in the beacon. And that stormwater, majority of it is routed to the existing wet pond, um, in, in the beacon. And that provides all the, the treatment and, um, uh, flooding, you know, uh, protection, uh, in, at that location. So, uh, we have a fairly robust, uh, landscaping plan, uh, both to be consistent with, uh, the existing development. And also to, to satisfy, uh, some of the, the screening requirements of, of Higas Parkway in particular. And, and the remainder of the town zoning ordinance. Again, this is a lot two, uh, with, with that, the additional screening, uh, along Higas Parkway. And then the robust, the robust plan, planting around the building itself. Likewise, uh, lot three, um, there is an existing tree line, uh, on Higas, but we're supplementing that with, with some evergreen screening. Um, and then the, the, again, the, the robust plan, planting plan around the buildings. Uh, we are, oh, let me go back a little bit. Um, Jay mentioned the cemetery. So on lot, uh, on lot two, uh, the existing cemetery, it, it consists of two headstones. Roughly in a, uh, maybe a, a 10 foot square area. And, and this, this dash line represents a 25 foot setback. That, that location is, is totally within a wooded location. Um, and there's no intent to, to get within that 25 foot setback or, or for, for that matter disturb the, the trees, um, that are surrounding that, that, that cemetery. There's also, uh, in the previous, uh, project, there was a, a, a movement to, to get some signage for that, um, that cemetery and that, that's in place. I think it was a boy scout that, that prompted that and that, that signage is in place for that cemetery. We would be asking for a few waivers, um, uh, primarily for, uh, some technical requirements that, that we think are not, uh, applicable. And I can certainly answer any questions regarding those, but they're regarding signage. We're not proposing any new signage. Offsite improvements, uh, there's, there's no offsite improvements warranted by the traffic. ID of historic or archaeological resources that, that work or that identification was done in the previous, during the previous project. And then the last one is the municipal capacity for review. Um, this project was, um, preliminary, uh, reviewed by DEP for an amendment to the site location. And typically they like to retain those, those review, uh, for those projects they have jurisdiction over. Finally, we, we have, we have received the staff comments and, and certainly will work to address those as we, uh, move forward, uh, through the process. And then be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is subject to a public hearing if there is any member of the public online. Nope. In that case, the, uh, I declare the hearing closed and let us turn this to the board.
Madam Chair, can I just?
Sure.
Just a, uh, a point of clarification. One of the things that has been referenced is, um, providing an easement along the Higas Parkway right of way. The Higas Parkway what right of way is quite wide and it's, uh, the town, I don't believe the town would have a need for an easement along the right of way. As it's been, as we've talked about with other projects that have been approved, it's been demonstrated that we can fit the sidewalk within the existing Higas Parkway right of way. So just as a, a bit of a point of clarification, um, because I think we've talked past each other on that point a couple of times. So, um, just wanted to. How's it? Minor?
Okay. Thank you. Board members. Roger?
Regarding the sidewalk, um, I'm not sure I totally understand everything regarding it. When I'm looking at, um, C1, C dash 1 dot 1. I think there's a sidewalk, which would be building 14,000. Is that, is that the other one? This is, is there a sidewalk that goes along?
So if you, if you don't have all the plans set, we maybe I'll pull up, pull up that sheet.
Okay, on that one there.
Yeah, I can show it here. So, so there is sidewalk throughout the, throughout the beacon and we're proposing sidewalk in front of building 14,000. To access the parking lot, a, as well as in front of 13,000 to access that parking lot. There's a connection to the existing sidewalk on Gateway Boulevard, which, which ties them into the rest of the development.
Right. It doesn't, is there a sidewalk on your plans that go right out to the Parkway?
Yeah, I believe that was built as part of the, uh, original approval. Or it may, and it actually may have been built. I may be wrong on this, but it may have been built as part of the project in 2007.
Okay, so there is a sidewalk there now?
Out to Higas, yeah, and terminates at Higas.
Okay. I'm just wondering, because if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, um, between your property and the golf and ski is where the Starbucks in the bank is going. Is that correct?
Should say that's where one has been discussed. We haven't received any formal application. So. But certainly you are, there is a driveway, an existing driveway just up the street as you head towards exit 42. A quarter mile, maybe less, I can't quite recall, but.
So it's not, it's not adjacent to this property?
There, it, it is, there is a, a long the Higas Parkway frontage. There is a small break and there's a sanitary pump station. So if you have this property that has, I don't know how much frontage, some hundred, some feet, sanitary, uh, pump station that maybe has a hundred feet of frontage. And then you get to the next property that you're talking about, Mr. Beal.
Okay, so is it, is, do I understand the town would like to see some pedestrian way going towards the intersection, possibly up to where the proposed Starbucks is?
So the thing that the town is trying to avoid in, is you may remember our workshop with the, with the Downs project. With their traffic movement permit, we now have a planned pedestrian connection from Center Street, which is where Scarborough Downs is going to come out on Higas Parkway. All the way up Higas Parkway to Payne Road and then da, down Payne Road to Cabellos. The town's interest is trying to, in any way, avoid having pedestrians get near that intersection of Higas and Payne Road. It's where exit 42 is coming out. It's just, it's not a, a good condition. So that's where, you know, we looked at the big picture and said, okay, is this an opportunity? When, when and if that Starbucks project comes along, we'll probably have the similar discussion and maybe that's the better opportunity. So I think at this point, the interest, and again, as we've seen with, with develop, other developments along Higas Parkway. Now that we know that, you know, we're seeing pedestrian activity out here, there's different uses. And now that we have a plan for pedestrian connections, I think that's where there's sort of the two, two conversations happening. One, you know, the, the sort of barely, I'll say straightforward with air quotes, um, expectation in the site plan in, in, in Higas Parkway District that in your frontage, you'll develop a sidewalk, recognizing that there's a planned pedestrian connection. Then the sort of more global conversations around what is that public benefit? You know, and that's really the contract zone discussion for council to be had, but certainly, again, as I mentioned, that's part of what this process is intended to entail is planning boards, at least thoughts, recognizing that's wholly out of the discretion of council to make that determination.
Well, even if the, um, the Starbucks proposal, say, doesn't occur, is a golf and ski entrance right off the parkway.
Correct.
So there could be a sidewalk going right up to there and then traverse through that to get over to the Cabela's, hooking up with.
Yep. And that's, again, that being private property, that would have to be a discussion in that, you know, should they come in for site? Yep. And that's, again, that being private property, that would have to be a discussion in that, you know, should they come in for site plan amendment? I'm certain even if we received this easement, that would probably be a discussion as well. I mean, I will say I've had a good conversation with the applicants and though they've been demonstrated, you know, or at least. Talked about the difficulties they would have. They have also demonstrated that they're willing to let people sort of walk there and they're not going to put up gates and say, hey, you can't do this. And, and the practical matter is how would they know who a resident is as opposed to the very few people? I mean, it's, there will be people walking it. I don't think it's going to be like a downtown area of people, pedestrian activity. But, you know, so I'm not sure if I'm.
Yes, what I'm getting at is, I can see the residents who are, you know, well into your development. If they wanted ultimately go get a coffee or something like that at Starbucks, they could actually go through your existing sidewalk and get right. Go right through Golf and Ski into that area there. But people who might be in this area or adjacent to it. It would be more, you know, more easier, I guess, for them to just walk out to the parkway and walk up. If, if they wanted to go into that area, you know. Do you mind waking your computer up?
Sorry.
So, but I guess, I don't know, I guess that's, that's sort of the hang up right now on the sidewalk. And that's still for further discussion. And it's probably with the town council too, right?
Yeah, I, I think, I, you know, I think for the planning board, the, the discussion is and the expectation of any project that came forward. Would be to build sidewalk along their frontage. So I think that outside of contract zone is part of. A typical expectation for a site plan. Development. Now, the board has the ability to waive that if you see fit, has the ability to. Look for other accommodation consistent with the site plan review ordinance. But I'd say, you know, based on the projects that the boards approved recently, including forty Higas Parkway, which is just south of here. Where their sidewalk going in. You know, the Acura development across the street, recognizing that that was on the wrong side of the street. They actually paid, they're paying a, an in lieu fee that can help maybe contribute to the town's pedestrian connection. Maybe at the south end of the network. Really, because at this point, we sort of know we're going to have a connection from Center Street up through Cabello's. What that looks like, you know, we, we, we have sort of the, I'll call it worst case scenario, though any connection is a best case scenario. So let's, you know, what, so. So maybe the, you know, the board sees that maybe a, a contribution to, rather than having them build in front of them. Contribution to the multimodal reserve for, again, looking at the south end of the Parkway. Could be an alternative approach or whatever that decision point is. But I think there's a decision point there. With the site plan beyond the contract zone.
And would that be more in the, in the realm of the town council?
Nope. That, that's, that to me is the planning board. What are you going to do along the frontage? Outside the frontage, I would say, once we get beyond the whatever number of square feet we have from property boundary to property boundary. At this property in front of buildings thirteen hundred and fourteen hundred. Once we get outside the extent of those, I would say, yes, now we're in, in town council land. In between, that is squarely been in this planning board's wheelhouse and part of what your discussions have been for other projects along the Parkway.
Okay, and is there a problem having leak, leak from a legal fund view, having a pedestrian easement going through their property? Versus out on Parkway?
So I, I guess, I, you know, not to speak for them, but yes, the, the, the conversation has been. Based on the challenges they have with their financing and, and things I frankly will admit. I don't fully appreciate and understand. There's challenges getting an easement through the other property. Because it's, as they mentioned, is held by a different outfit entity, what, what have you. Again, as I mentioned before, and that was the point of clarity I tried to make, the town doesn't need an easement along the, the Higas Parkway right away. We have, it's a, it's a very wide right away. There's plenty of area to get a sidewalk in on the backside of the ditch. Has been demonstrated through the work that we've done with the Downs and other projects along Higas Parkway.
You all set? All right, Jen.
So, um, to further talk about that. So as part of what you are currently proposing. Are you not, you're not proposing an easement for pedestrian access through. This property? And I don't, I'm, I was writing as fast as I could and if I, if I skipped to this important one, I apologize. But you're not also at this time planning to make a contribution. As an in lieu of fee for pedestrian facilities, is that right? I got the public housing one and public transit.
That's my understanding. There's no, been no discussion about a specific dollar amount. But a willing, you know, willingly participating to the extent, you know, room is needed, space is needed to build that pedestrian. Sidewalk.
Okay, so. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of funny, Higas Parkway, there's like, it's pretty unusual. That anywhere would have that much room to work with, have any room to work with, period. Like usually, yeah, we would totally take you up on an easement on the front of your property because we always need more space for that. Except on Higas Parkway, because it is so unbelievably wide. I would love to just sit down and talk to the people who weigh that out one day. But, so, so you're. So your, your. Offering for accommodating pedestrians. Currently is an easement at the frontage of your property. That's what you're saying?
That's right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I just, I wasn't quite sure about that. And so what, Jay, what I think I'm hearing you say is that we thank you, but we actually don't need that in this case. So, yeah, this is super, it's super interesting. Just very roughly measuring the distance, walkable distance on. The road that's already there from I guess Parkway through this to the Cabello's intersection. I'm getting, I'm getting approximately two thousand feet, which is, which is pretty long. But it's, I think we're, I think it's an advantage that this is already here. Because I absolutely also agree with Jay that funneling pedestrians to and through. The exit forty-two intersection is just not, it's just not a good idea. You know, we, I personally have done so much work in other places and we collectively as a board. And the town's transportation committee have done a lot of work in town. In an effort to try and do our best to retrofit some intersections that we already have in town. Where we know we need pedestrians there and it's, and it's a challenge because they're already large and they're not inherently very friendly. But I kind of, you know, this one's just like kind of a really big. A really big elephant to tackle. And, and frankly, there's, you know, there's checking the, there's checking the pedestrian facility box. And built, you know, we could build infrastructure to this intersection, put in ramps, put in crosswalks. But it is not a place that anyone would want to use. So I, I, you know, I, I don't think that's. A great idea either. So I, so then the question comes back to, you know, how, I, I think. If you're, do you know offhand? What if any. Accommodations you made as part of the initial development of the beacon for pedestrian facilities? And by this, I, I don't necessarily mean internal sidewalks to your front doorways, connecting parking lots or anything like that. But we're, because there isn't, because as part of that project, you obviously didn't construct sidewalk on Higas Parkway. I'm curious if you know, or maybe you know, Jay, if there was a contribution made at that point.
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that a little bit. So there was some discussion around that. And actually at the time, as I recall it, and certainly I'm happy to be corrected. A lot of the focus was really around connection through transit. I think we had a little bit of a blind spot on pedestrian because we didn't have a known plan along Higas Parkway. We sort of said, ooh, Higas Parkway, that's so uninviting for pedestrians. No one's going to walk there. And so we had a discussion around how can we tie into transit? And rightfully, you know, we also don't have transit in this area. So that's really where it came to the applicant as part of the process contributing to our multimodal reserve. And I think that was already talked about one time this evening. I think, you know, we've learned our lesson and we, we do see, and we hear from public safety police department. That they commonly see folks walking along Higas Parkway headed towards the Holy Donut, if you will. Or, you know, so it's certainly, you're starting, we're, we're seeing it more and more that there are folks. And so that's where I think the conversation has, has certainly shifted since twenty sixteen, fifteen, seventeen. Whenever we initially started the conversation with this project and I think where we're in a little bit of a different place at this time. Talking about at least minimally sort of a sidewalk along the frontage. And then what goes beyond that, perhaps council's fully satisfied with the public benefits that are being illustrated. And that, that's perfectly fine. But I, I guess that's. Part of the answer and certainly if I've misrepresented anything, please.
No, I think that's right. I think at the time we were focused on, or, or the town council in connection with the contract zone was focused on other priorities relating to. You know, the impact fees, for example, there's almost two million in impact fees associated with that project. And there's a, there's a list of, you know, bus shelter and traffic impact and so forth. So I, I don't recall a lot of discussion about sidewalks along Higas at that time.
For, for sure, without, without any other development or context, it does kind of seem, would, would have seemed a little. Out there probably. I'm, I'm curious if you know. Like, have you ever had any residents ask about that? Or do you have any knowledge of residents walking to the fitness facilities further down Higas Parkway, for example?
I don't know. My understanding is that, that, that we've not seen a lot of pedestrian traffic. Which.
A lot of times that's, that's the case, you know. Just because you don't see people there doesn't mean they don't want to be there. It just means they're not, they're not there. Because they're probably not feeling safe. So anyway, I, I just. I think, I, I think Higas Parkway is really interesting to me because it's very long. For a sort of standard. Sidewalk or pedestrian connection and, and the, even the things that we're starting to see come forward are spaced. You know, far enough apart that I, I think they, you know, they're technically walkable. But is it like an approachable, walkable distance? I'm not entirely sure. But I think with, with good planning. And, and again, absolutely bolstered by the fact that we have so much room to work with out there. There is great potential for this to be a really super, you know, to, to have a great facility out there that's safe. I don't think a curbed sidewalk right on the edge of Higas Parkway is what anyone is hoping for. And so, you know, in addition to that, I think adding. I understand the, the context in which you came to the table the first time around, adding this, this housing. And that the conversation at that time around walkability and pedestrian facilities might have just seemed so far out. That it wasn't part of the discussion, but I think it is a relevant part of the discussion now. And I think adding more housing to this corridor. Or development of, of almost any kind really should help. Realize that vision. And I guess I'm not really sure how else to, how else to say that. I think both staff and peer review comments were, were pretty good around this. And I hear you and echo Jay's. Jay's comments about, you know, not, not fully appreciating, I believe you, but, you know, certainly not, not fully appreciating. The burdens that you're talking about. You know, with having the financing challenges and, and securing a peddiesment over the land that's already, or the sidewalks that are already there. I'm curious if that, do you know if that applies? To the entire property? So like if there were to be an easement. Over that property, but in a different location, does that, does it not matter?
No, so it's the beacon, the original beacon project, the two hundred and eighty-eight units is mortgaged. Fannie Mae holds the mortgage. So it, it's pretty customary in a mortgage that you have a. Provision, it's a due on sale clause, says you can't transfer any rights in the property. You've given them all to Fannie Mae. And that includes easements or, you know, it could be electrical easement, could be if you wanted to sell a portion of the property. None of that can happen without Fannie Mae's approval in this case. But that doesn't apply to the two lots we're talking about tonight. Those were specifically excluded so that development could go forward.
Okay. Yeah, so I, I guess I would. I would encourage. At a minimum. An in lieu of fee for the frontage of these properties. And appreciating that, you know, or you can construct it if, if that's your preference. But, you know, my guess is that at some point there will be. A more significant construction effort in terms of a pedestrian facility out here. Onto which, if you were to contribute, it's probably more efficient that way than building, you know, the one, one frontage at a time. But you might also have enough frontage to make it worthwhile. I'm not sure. But I, but I do just, I do think that's important, not just townwide. Or for the Higas Parkway corridor itself, but also for your residents. I, I think, you know, I think. When the Downs becomes further built out and not even just the Downs. But there's a lot of other infill development that we already know about on Higas Parkway. You know, some that Roger alluded to earlier, some we heard of earlier, earlier in another project. I think those are destinations that people. You know, they're not, they're not that far away. And I, I think those are, we would be well served to provide connection like that. In a way that. Encourages people to not make that trip in their car if they don't have to. So. Sorry, that's long, but I think it's important. I'm good.
All right, thank you. Great.
Yeah, I won't talk sidewalks, I promise. And I wasn't around when the first phase, or I don't know how many phases this was to do the total build out. But your, your area is very, very well lit. In fact, it's overlit. Parking areas are certainly exceeding. I see you did put a footnote on the average of one point three. When it should be a point two on the allowance Scarborough's ordinance. But I'm also not sure it's going to look good if we start trying to do changes in there. By. Asking you to go to a three K because you do have four K fixture colors. I don't know, how does staff feel about that or what should we, I'm just bringing it to your attention that there are. The four K color versus what we've typically been doing at, at three K on the color. So now you're going to get more of a bluer light. The lumen output is, the fixtures are.
I guess, um, what I can, I guess, add to that is that what we're doing on our materials. The more lit corridors is the four, that's the only place in town we're using them, right? Along like Route one and it's probably high, I guess, in the same places. And to your point about that transition is going to be tricky for probably this site. But you could also do the same thing, it may be along the corridor of, like, obviously the boulevard that's coming through is going to be four K. Because it already is, right? I don't know. I, I think where these kind of entities kind of sit in their, their little, we could look at seeing what that looks like.
Yeah, I don't know if it's that big of a deal. I mean, we're talking about, you know. Generally speaking, though, the, if, if this follows suit with what's been built out already, there's a lot of light there.
Well, and this is what you'll see from Higas, right? So maybe this is a good opportunity to kind of transition that then, so that you're not getting.
I'll leave that up to you.
Well, I would love your input on that.
Yeah, I, I would say really that we're going to need to hear from planning board. Yeah, I, I would say really that we're going to need to hear from planning board. Because, right, our standard really doesn't talk about three K or four K. We talk about light candles, point two, point one, whatever the case may be. Really, you know, now we're getting into the aesthetic value, which really is, you know, getting into our commercial design standards, which is more qualitative, which is why we have. Our distinguished board to help us with those type of decisions.
Yeah, I'm trying to get to the point where. Uh, we're being able to look people in the face and the community in the face and saying, we're not doing any harm. And, you know, over lighting and uplighting and not having. Having four K, you're never going to get dark sky, uh, certification on. So it's those kind of elements that. Kind of, I'm sensitive to. But. Over and above that is the fact that. Uh, in the plans, it referenced the standard for. For, um. The proposed lights, our, our standard is point. Two foot candles and they're coming in with three point one. And, and so. That's going to have, you know, quite a, if you look down on it, it's going to be, I guess that's maybe why they're calling it the beacon. Uh, because it certainly will be a beacon. Uh, so maybe it was appropriately named, I don't know. Uh, but I would encourage maybe trying to get. A little less foot candles in the, in this area, especially. Um, as we continue to work, work down and develop these other parcels in, in the, in the Higas Parkway. Uh, so I, I'd put that out to you folks, maybe take a look at that. The other thing I want to point out is. When you built your, the other buildings, uh, Maine has now transitioned into a stricter energy code. So this is going to have an impact on how you construct your buildings. And, uh, you're. Uh, just throwing it out there that you're going to have to meet it because you're three stories and below at grade. You're falling under a residential. Provisions and you have to meet the three air exchange per hour. And so now you're talking about an envelope that is, is going to have to support that. And so be aware that as, as you move into this, um, code enforcement is going to be looking for that. Lower door certification that gets you to that three air exchanges. Lot tighter than it used to be. And then finally, I'll just add that. When the other ones were built, we did, we had the two thousand and some addition of the comprehensive plan. And we now have a brand new one. And something that was worked on very hard and we certainly, uh, look at other ways like, uh, putting in. Where, where it works or orientating roof line so that, uh, potentially, uh, renewable energy could be. Utilized and looking at that space down, uh, there's a lot of open, open. Area that, uh, we might be able to take advantage of, of potentially adding on. And you folks could take. Certainly advantage of some of the tax credits that are available for, for doing this. So I'm just throwing that out and as you start to go down and. Get ready for construction drawings and things of that nature. Things have changed since, in Maine, since the last time nails were pounded. With that, I'm tired. So I'll end. Oh, thank you for the, for the EV chargers. I will acknowledge that contribution to, uh, uh. Most of the, my colleagues know that that's a pet peeve with me. And if we have that many parking spots, we had to be transitioning some of our vehicles to EVs and. It, having. The location where it is and making it a, a, able to be acknowledged if you network it, that it's a public charging station. Coming off the turnpike makes a very nice stop to get a quick. Thirty minute charge. And you could walk through the nice sidewalks that are going to be there. You can walk to the restaurant that'll be there. That's the only reference to sidewalks I'm going to make. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, gentlemen, we have, um. Both delved a little deeper than, than we needed to at this point, but I think that, uh, building. As, as we did, uh. Gives you a chance, I, if this passes the board, and I, I certainly, I hope it does. Uh, for you to come back for a final approval and to have considered things like, uh, the lighting. Our, our. Plan for tonight was to review is for the board to determine if the proposed use is. In general can, uh, conformance with the site plan review ordinance. Um, and I suspect we have determined that that is correct. I, I think that what's holding, it's just kind of hanging fire is the use of, um. Not the use, but the. The construction of, should there be a construction of a sidewalk? Along Higas Parkway, um, we don't need an easement, the town doesn't need an easement, uh, that's not a case, but. When you, when you came before as before, we were thinking. You kind of sitting there by yourself, um, and. I certainly was thinking, um, right now this isn't connecting with anything much. But since then, we have seen the master plan for the Downs. We know where Center Street is coming out. Uh, we have seen a lot more development coming along Higas Parkway. Uh, earlier tonight, we had, um, a, a preliminary hearing on another extensive, uh, development to the, to the south. Um, right near Route one along Higas Parkway. I live off of Scotto Hill Road, so I'm frequently on Higas Parkway. I do see people walking along there. I. I see people that I think have probably done some exercise at Foley's Fitness and decided to just. Uh, get out of the Higas Parkway, run down to Payne Road and trot back, uh, to Foley's Fitness. And bless them, I would not do that, but bless them. So I, I think now we are, as a couple of board members have said, we are in a very different. Position than we were a couple of years ago. And I think we need a, a sidewalk there, whether it's, uh. Comes by way of the multimodal, uh, fund, or you work with the town to develop it along your frontage. I, I think. Now i- is the time to get that going. I think within a couple of years. We are going to see a pretty solid connection all the way along Higas Parkway. And as I said, uh, other folks coming in have started to, to go along with that and to provide money, um. In anticipation of, of that sidewalk. The question, I guess, becomes, and it's something that you and the town council have to answer. Is that enough of a public benefit? For the town council to agree to extend the contract zone? I'm not going to make that judgment. I don't know that, I don't think the board is, is going to make that judgment. I, I think at a, at a minimum, we need to see that sidewalk, uh, and. If there is more that you can think of beyond the affordable housing, um, my recommendation would be to think very hard. Um, because the, the town council is going to be scrutinizing this. I hope we see you come back. Let me just comment a little bit about the cemetery, which I believe has, you, you said has signage, that's good. And you're not clearing trees, that's fine. I, I do think there needs to be some sort of a physical. Um, delineation, not necessarily a fence to that cemetery, simply because. A cemetery in the woods tends to disappear. Uh, and sooner or later, um, somebody's going to say, this is a good tree to cut down. Uh, not you folks, but somebody else five or 10 years. And if there is no. Delineation, if there's no fence, if there's no marking, those. The headstones are going to start to sink, they're going to be knocked over, and it's going to be a problem. I, I say this simply because. My daughter has a cemetery on her property, um, when she and her husband bought it down in Rhode Island. And they are in the process of rehabbing it and ensuring that, uh, it's, it's protected. So i- it's a place where the families left their loved ones. So respecting that and finding a way to protect it, I think, would be. Uh, very appropriate. Uh, and it turns out, uh, actually that my daughter. And they did some research afterwards, and it turns out that the people buried there, um. Are my great, great. Grandmother's sisters descendants. So, um, they have a real interest in that. You could end up, uh, having residents in the Beacon whose ancestors are in that cemetery. So I would, uh, ask you to, you know, take a look at that. Let me ask the, uh, the board, are we ready to pass this forward? Um, to recommend to the town council, what's, what would be the language that they move forward?
Preliminary approval.
Preliminary approval. Uh, uh, understanding that it would come back to us for some final. Work, uh, on those areas that we have talked about, if the town council does extend the contact, contract zone. Uh, we ready for that? Uh, then let's, uh, take a vote. Simply to be clear, I make a motion that the, uh, planning board. Recommend the Beaconway Gateway Commons. Uh, it's expansion, uh, for preliminary approval, subject to its return to us if the town council. Determines that it was going to extend the contract zone to this property. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Comments, uh, all in, Doreen, call the roll.
I, I do have a comment. So just to. Reiterate, I guess, um, understanding that the council will be taking a look at. What they determine the public benefits of this. Zone to be in order to keep the contract zone, is that what I, is it, do I have that right? I guess I would just remind. Them, or maybe we could relay the message that, um, any site plan that we see. We, and, and I will back up by saying there are many ways in which to benefit the public. Um, and I understand that you are proposing several of those. Aside from. Pedestrian facilities, but that. The, the minimum of providing a sidewalk either in place or a fee in lieu of. Along the frontage of this property is something that we would be expecting of any, um, of any development. Um, not in a contract zone, so. While yes, that does, that is technically a benefit to the public, I think that it's just sort of baseline. I, I, I understand that to be something that we would be looking at. Uh, from any project and that, um, you know, if, if they're looking for things. Beyond the, those markers. In terms of what this is bringing to the public benefit, I think. At least in terms of pedestrian facilities, there's, there's, that shouldn't, um, that should be the bare minimum.
Yeah, thank you for, um, clarifying that. That was, that was my intent as part of the, um. Preliminary site approval. Within the guidelines require that sort of a, a process that the, that, uh, sidewalk. So, but thank you for spelling that out, yes. All right, Doreen.
Wait, John Robinson?
Yes.
Roger Beely?
Yes.
Jennifer Lee?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you very much, folks.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Hope we see you pretty soon. Uh, staff report.
Uh, sure, I have just a couple of quick items to bring the board up to speed on. Uh, first couple, let's talk about a couple of zoning. Uh, amendments. One, if you remember when the pandemic started, we had an emergency ordinance that allowed for. Restaurants and other service providers, retailers to provide for outdoor sales and service. That wasn't approved by the planning board. We've sort of gone beyond the emergency ordinance allowance, if you will, but we're still in the throes or. We're all trying to figure out what's going on with the pandemic, right? There's still something happening, however you want to call it. So council has taken the, uh, I think the, uh, the right and appropriate step to actually adopt a formal ordinance. That is going to allow the continuation of those that have been approved with a sunset in May of next year. Now, depending on what's going on with the pandemic, maybe it gets extended, maybe it doesn't. Part of the reason, there's really twofold reason why, why May of next year is being considered, one, because we're still in the throes of the pandemic. Two, it gives opportunity for those businesses that have been doing this. If they've seen that it can work and they can come to this planning board and demonstrate that it can work, they can get site plan amendment for these things. We do allow for it. It's just oftentimes what's happening is they're using parking that was otherwise approved based on their usage or what have you, so. With the benefit of time and use, maybe they can make that case to the board, maybe they can't, but that's. Um, and so that message will be being conveyed to the, to, there's only maybe a dozen or so, so it's, you know, we have a, a limited number of folks that we can converse with. And, and try to get them understanding. So let you know that that's going on. Then also council is, um. Yeah, planning board, you, you did your job with the public hearing on the, on the, um, utility scale solar. Uh, that went back to planning board for, uh, sorry, council for public hearing and is on for second reading at their next meeting. I believe it's next week, so. Um, those are two zoning things that are happening. Then two other, uh, workshops that are occurring that planning board members might be interested in, in viewing or, or attending or. Perhaps even participating in is, uh, the first is a workshop next Wednesday. For property at seven, uh, I'm sorry, seven hundred Candlewood. This is for, um, the, oh, shoot, the name of the, there's an extended stay hotel.
Candlewood Suites.
Candlewood Suites, goodness, it is getting, yeah. It's not even late, I can't even blame the late hour. This is a quick meeting, so I'm just out of practice, I suppose. Candlewood Suites is looking to, um. Begin a contract zone discussion around converting from being extended stay hotel to apartments. Um, this is what council likes to call a step zero workshop, so this isn't. You know, when and if a formal application is submitted, we'd have that joint workshop, but you just might be interested to sort of. Hear what is being proposed and hear council's initial, uh, thoughts. Then the other one, uh, that the chairwoman reminded me of earlier today, uh, on the twentieth. The town council will be receiving the Downs Downtown Committee Report. Um, and so that may be another one that folks might be interested in attending either in person or virtually. Those are both Wednesday nights. Start time, anywhere between seven, uh, five thirty and seven o'clock, you can assume, but certainly look on the town's website as those, as those dates get closer. Those are my staff reports.
Yes, I'm gonna, um, pick up where Jemelle left off with precons, so.
Thank you.
Since the, since, um, the last time we met, um, we, we have had a preconstruction meeting for the. Um, Town Center Residential, the third amended subdivision, they have started out there. Um, as well as the Carriage Walk Apartments, that additional building and the parking out there is underway.
Um, I did notice that they completely stripped the trees along. Along the Downs Road at that, uh, parking overflow, thought they were going to leave some.
Um, they, part of the preconstruction meeting we had before they broke ground was, um. Delineating the, the limit of work and the disturbance, so they followed the plan. That's how far back. The tree disturbance was, I, I guess that's all I could say to that.
It comes all the way up to the sidewalk and then we're going to tree.
The plans, the approved plan said anyway, the landscape plan showed new landscape. So there, there will be things coming back, but.
Yes.
The existing they go.
And I actually have had a conversation with them, um. The construction team out there and during the pre-con and then after pre-con, we're out in the field looking at. Finding that a lot of subdivision, the street trees just don't do well, right? So there are some coming into grist smell, um, that are dead or dying, which I've talked to them about while they're there and doing planting. which I've talked to them about while they're there and doing plantings to take, um, some of those that maybe are healthy, they're taken out. Can you replace this dead dying tree? So we were talking about trying to work that out too in that area. Like that'll be working.
Administrative amendment report.
Sure. Uh, so there's two new items on, on the report. One is, uh, at two Washington Avenue. Um, this is in addition, uh, sort of out back of the existing building. Excuse me. That one is, uh, largely been approved, staff reviewed it. There were some minor comments and the app can need to do some, some minor tweaks. The other one is twenty one Washington Avenue, again, in addition to an existing building in the industrial district. Uh, this is just across the street from Public Works. There's a few more questions there, so they're working on, if you will, a resubmission, uh, for review. And then two others that we discussed previously, uh, one at lot thirty Innovation District and one at one forty five Pleasant Hill Road, um, that staff has reviewed and, and should be all set with at this point. So that is what I have for the minor development review.
Is the, is the Pleasant Hill Road one, is that the Landry French project?
That, that, I think that was Hannaford's, isn't it?
It's Hannaford. It's, yeah, and just it out on the backside of Hannaford, what they're doing is doing sort of a garden, uh, area and, um, sitting area and stuff. Yeah, so I, yeah, uh, if you recall, Landry French to get site plan approval, maybe back in the spring, maybe a year ago, I can't remember anymore. Uh, but certainly that's a site that will, um, be inspecting, be sure is consistent and with the approved site plan, as I noticed that as well and sort of raising eyebrow, but maybe, you know, I just don't remember all the details. Yep.
All right, correspondence? None? Planning board comments?
I have, I have a question.
Sure.
I'm, I'm kind of curious about the, uh, the cemeteries. Is, is the twenty five foot, is that a state? That's a state thing. Now Scarborough's littered with all these cemeteries. I, I would venture to say, then if you, let me know that even exists.
I know some years ago, um, the police department sort of took the lead on doing white in inventory of all the, trying to find all the cemeteries, even those that are one, one and two headstones. I don't know that there's certainly enough, a lot of mapping that was done. And actually I know it informed at least one or two subdivisions within the last five to seven years. So maybe it's I'm dating myself back to ten years ago, they did the cemetery work anyway. Um, that mapping has been done. If I had to venture a guess, it's probably on the town's online GIS system. I haven't looked in a while, but, um, Angelie.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's, it, it, we, we do have the mapping. I don't think it's open on the public side, maybe of our GIS. Uh, it's something that the police, like you said, the police department was, um, championed to to try to track those down and, and provided comments, the planning staff, when we had something in the area, but, um, but we can definitely bring that up and see if we can get that.
I was just kind of curious as to, I mean, for instance, take the Libby. I, I, I remember a number of years ago talking to a Libby individual, you know, and I asked him if he was connected to, like, Lamb Libby's, all right? And he said, no, that's another family, that's another tree or branch or something. But this, this Libby, for instance, scattered cemeteries throughout the whole town. And I just wonder when a developer comes across some tombstones, gravestones, I mean, they must come to the town and say, oh, they check it out. But who did it, is their responsibility to contact somebody to find out?
Yes, it's a pretty big deal when you start. It's, any contractor will run far away because knowing that they have a lot of hoops to jump through and it goes through the state agencies and things like that, it's, it's usually just stops a project. I mean, because it is a serious matter and you kind of have to deal with that and in a respectful way. And so I think that kind of holds a lot of projects at first, unless you know ahead of time and can plan ahead. And that's where, like you said, knowing where those are and having, um, staff that we're able to identify where those are is extremely helpful.
And when you reference sort of halting projects, you're, you're referencing if the development didn't know about them in advance.
That's what I'm saying, it's better.
And the development was coming through it, whereas in the case that we're talking about, we know where the cemetery is, it's over to the side. So now it's just about, okay, is there some way to better delineate or articulate where that is, but it shouldn't have any impact on the development process.
It's definitely not something that can be ignored and everybody.
My last question is, can, can anybody just bury somebody on the property nowadays?
Not anymore, don't they?
No.
Any other, any other planning board comments? All right, now, nice meeting, guys. I, we got through an awful lot. Um, we we cleared it out, I, and, um, I don't know what it looks like over the if we started to get stuff in for the next one.
We're looking good.
One, good, okay. Um, we, we, we know that this works seasonally. It looks as though, I, I, I know that there's at least one application in and there may be two more coming in for seats on the planning board. So we may get up to, up to full full force, um, in a couple of weeks. Um, and for the staff, for the planning board, uh, you're in the process of a search and getting, getting close.
That is the, yes. Yes, things are going well and.
So as soon as we have, um, as soon as we, we do get up to full full numbers, I, and get a new person on, then we'll hold a, a workshop, which we've traditionally done sometime in January. Um, we've taken that opportunity to, to meet and go through items of, I, I guess of how the, the planning board operates, training, new stuff coming up. Uh, so I would I, I'm, would plan to set up a workshop probably in, in January. With the town attorney, just to remind us of what our role is in various places, uh, to explain any details we might have forgotten from the training. Uh, and it would be an opportunity, uh, as well for us to bring new people up to up to date and to, to work with, uh, a new staff person if, if Jay determines he wants to pass us on to um, his assistant instead of keep us because we're really good people and he should like us. And he hasn't said that, I mean, he hasn't said anything about it yet, but, um, anyhow, so, so we will, we will do that. Uh, that's traditionally when we kind of have a a year close of what's going on, um, it's election of officers again. A- as a workshop, it's open to the public and occasionally members of the public have come in and sat down during it. It's kind of interesting, but, uh, let's take a look at that. So we, we probably will have two workshops coming up, one for Three Diamonds Realty on Haggis and uh, one that's our annual how we operate workshop. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn? Rick Mankin, uh, any objections? I didn't think so. We are, we were adjourned.
All right. We definitely, uh, uh, put it back in your bag and we'll take it downstairs. It's quite an agenda for Jemelle to leave on, I'll tell you what. Jesus, Crowe. There's a lot of people you have to contact, it turns out.